Regularly scheduled town council meeting. Please rise now for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for an invocation, Mr. Roger Bates. Elder from the Christ Church. Thanks, Roger, for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here substituting for Pastor Gary Emons tonight to lead a prayer. Would all still remain standing. You come before your Father tonight in a desire that you come before us in this meeting. Lead us in the decisions that have to be made tonight. Give us thoughts and the strength to do the right thing. Lord, we also lift up those in Japan this evening and ask for your provision for them. Father God, bless all who is here tonight. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Mr. Bates. Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Schlem.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Just want to mention one thing. Just happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. And I see a lot of green in the audience. Good for you guys. Had a green hat on earlier out at the Fountain Park and saw a lot of folks having fun. And then just even more importantly, specifically for our town of Fountain Hills, this today represents the two-year anniversary of our beloved council member and Mr. Fountain Hills' volunteer extraordinaire Keith McMahon's passing two years ago today. So I want to recognize and remember Keith, as I'm sure we all do, particularly on St. Patrick's Day, and what amazing guy, amazing guy he was for our community. And we still benefit from all he's done in the past. But that was all I had. Now we'll move into scheduled public appearances and presentations. Got the pleasure of reading, which is appropriate, seeing that Keith McMahon was the volunteer extraordinaire, particularly for all things related to business in our community. Got a proclamation declaring April 2011 as Volunteer Month. Town Fountain Hills proclamation, whereas April is designated National Volunteer Month and giving freely to others, is one of the noblest of human enterprises. And whereas this year marks the 38th anniversary celebration of Volunteer Month created in 1973 to recognize the efforts of dedicated community volunteers, and whereas nationally more than 140 million volunteers working in their communities contribute their time and talents daily to make a real difference in the lives of others. And whereas more than 700 Fountain Hills volunteers donated their time to the town of Fountain Hills in 2010 by giving approximately 25,000 hours of volunteer service to the community center, senior and boomer activity center, and the municipal court, as well as volunteering in departments at town hall, including administration, development services, and community services. Now therefore, I, J.T. Schlem, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim April 2011 as Volunteer Month in the town of Fountain Hills and hereby express deeply, deep gratitude to the many volunteers who support the town of Fountain Hills by generously giving their time and talents to the benefit of the community dated this first day of April 2011. And that's the proclamation from the town. And of course, our community has far more volunteers than just 700. Those, we do have a huge number, this 700-plus, that specifically volunteer for the government, the town of Fountain Hills. And of course, the many volunteers and the other organizations and those just neighbors, helping neighbors outnumber this as well. So it's great to lift up and have a Volunteer Month here in Fountain Hills. Move on now to call to the public. Do we have anyone from call to the public?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers, Mike Arshambo and then Linda Bardot.
Thank you. Mr. Arshambo, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name's Mike Arshambo. I live here in Fountain Hills, been living here since '72. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my displeasure over the articles published in The Times last week. I moved here in 1972 and have never, in those, in almost 40 years, seen such a flagrant violation of one's personal affairs. I represent several residents when I say that we are truly sorry for the embarrassing incident. Mayor, I have known you since you moved here at the age of 17. Our paths have crossed several, on several occasions, but none as long as the six years we spent on the council. Jesus tells us that if we want to serve God, whatever we do to the least of our brothers, that we do unto Him. We are two very like people, Mayor. I am here to lay witness to the numerous good deeds that you have done during your time here in Fountain Hills. I'm sure that your love for your fellow man and your love for God plays a big role in your actions. I find it despicable that a person can be so evil that they cannot even sign a letter that they place on a reporter's desk alerting them to some personal matter. This speaks volumes about their integrity. And speaking of integrity, Mayor, I stand here before the town in testament of your unwavering integrity. I am proud to say that I know you and I'm proud to stand next to you. My 16-year-old niece happened to see that article. They were over visiting. And she looked at me and she said, "Uncle Mike, why would somebody put something like that in the paper?" And I didn't know what to say to her. I often think that maybe we should step back and look through the eyes of a child. And I stand here tonight to offer whatever means that I have at my disposal to help you and your family. I do this publicly, and I do not do this as a special favor, but as an extended hand that I would have extended to anyone else that was or is in need. I extend it because I know that whatever I do to my brothers, I do unto God. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Arshambo. No applause needed. Thanks.
Mayor, we have one more card. It'd be Linda Bardot, followed by Edward Zelig.
Great, thanks. Welcome, Ms. Bardot.
Hi, Mayor, Council. How are you? I came to talk about preparedness. That's one of the best things you can be in life is prepared. And in lieu of what's happened in Japan, I don't know what we're in for next. I mean, we could have some sort of fallout from that. I don't know. It's unlikely. There's, you know, more action in the Ring of Fire that could take place in the subduction zones along the coast of Washington and Oregon. There could be some sort of terrorist attack, some sort of power outage. When I moved here back in the '90s, I was here during that eight-state blackout. That wasn't much fun in the summer. My point is that we don't know what could happen, but anything could. And in a counter size, it would be manageable if we had some sort of civilian volunteer unit, battalion, force, whatever you wanted to call it, that would be able to do things like secure our grocery stores. There's only four points of entry into the town. Secure medical supplies, our water supply. We have a great sheriff's office and department, yet there's only a handful there because we're a civilian, I mean, we're a satellite office. And we do have a lot of volunteers. We have a lot of ex-military who live in this town, a lot of people who carry concealed weapons permits that are perfectly vetted and used to doing things like securing sites and zones. I think one of the things that would stop people from being afraid if something like that happened would be to know that the town is prepared and there is a plan. I know it looks like there's a lot of food and Safeway, but there really isn't when you consider the size of the population. If there were to be looting or things like that, it wouldn't, wouldn't last very long. If we knew that we had a measure in place to ensure that the town would be able to handle and manage all those things, I think the desire to be afraid and panic and loot would be alleviated. So I'd like to offer that and my assistance in any such endeavor. I'd like to be able to participate in putting something like that together for the town. I don't know who's accountable for that. And in response to what the gentleman said before me, you know, I have some sympathy for what your children must have felt for what was written in the paper. That couldn't have been fun for them in school. I have some experiences in that with my own family. However, you're a public official, so unfortunately, that's part of the problem that people have going into politics. They have to weigh all that sort of stuff. So while I sympathize for whatever embarrassment may have happened for you, that's kind of the way our system works in this country. I'm not proud of it, but it's the way it is. That's why we have a lot of folks who, you know, kind of back off from that kind of stuff. It just reminds me of everything that happened to Sarah Palin. I mean, they attacked her family, her children, herself, and they continue to do so to this day. So I sympathize, Mayor, but I did want to point out for everyone at home, even though I don't necessarily agree with the personal attack, that's part of politics. So I think that's all I want to say, but thank you. And again, if you, I think you know how to contact me, Mayor, in terms of volunteers or so. We look forward to you being able to do that for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bardot. We certainly do have an emergency operations plan, and Chief Legreca is key in that in the back of the room, so that's who you'll likely hear from. Thank you.
Mr. Zelig.
Mr. Zelig.
Mayor and council members. I wanted to find out some more information about this trash program, this new trash program that's supposed to be initiated. I came to town hall here and I was told there are a total of 216 pages dealing with the trash program. 216. I requested documentation and paid for and received 16 pages of explanation of the dos and don'ts regarding trash. I wanted to find out what was all involved in this, because I'm hearing a lot of different things in, in reading things in the paper. And the conclusion I've come up with thus far, I think there's an absurdity in the complexity in the rules and regulations involved in this trash package. Things are complicated and contradictory. Who or what are you talking about at times? I'm not sure. I've read, reread some phrases over and over, and I say, "What are they talking about?" Violations, penalties, and fines can be very costly. Never before. I've been here eight, nine, 10 and plus years and never had, experienced anything like that in terms of violations and penalties, and I don't think it should be part of it. I think a disservice was done to the community by not allowing a vote for the residents on this. Who was responsible for initiating this? Was this strictly environmentalist or what? I don't know. What was the process that was involved? I know the council voted on it and voted in, except for two people that voted no. If there's a way to negate this whole process, I would suggest that it be done.
Thank you, Mr. Zelig. I would suggest, and he sounds like he's talked to staff, Rick, I don't know. There's information, get him specifically related to trash implementation plan. But, Mr. Zelig, unfortunately, it's not an agendized item, so we can't discuss it or answer questions for you right now. But thank you for coming up. That was it on call to the public.
Yes, sir.
All right, move on to the consentage item, consent agenda. And we've got, how many items here tonight? Three items tonight. I'll go through these and then look for a motion. First item's consideration of approving town council meeting minutes from February 8th and March 3rd, 2011. Item two, consideration of resolution 2011-11, abandoning whatever right, title, or interest in the town has in certain public utility and drainage easements located at 15202 East Lotus Lane. Number three, consideration of a special event, event application for a movie at the park sponsored by Town of Fountain Hills to be held April 2, 2011 in Fountain Park. Swarro Boulevard will be closed from Avenue of the Fountains to Palisades Boulevard. Make sure that's it. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember Leger.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Mayor Schlem.
Aye.
Mayor 70.
Thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda item. Number four, consideration of appointing one citizen to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Commission. Last PSAC applicant interviewed from the first application submittals was Mr. George Aylory. I move to appoint Mr. George Aylory to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Commission for the remainder of a two-year term, beginning March 17, 2011, and ending December 31, 2012. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No speaker cards in this item?
No, sir.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 70.
Thank you. Item five, consideration of resolution 2011-10, approving a second amendment to the development agreement for Pacific FH Resort LLC. Welcome, Mr. Rogers. How are you?
You're good. Thank you. Fountain Hills Conference Resort and Spa has proposed 233-room resort hotel with 36 additional condominiums, making a total of 269 units. Also included are sales office, event lawn, restaurants, ballrooms, conference rooms, a lounge, gift shop, outdoor patios, pools, and a lush landscaping and rooftop gardens. Project is located on Palisades Boulevard, just north of the Palisades Shea intersection. The subject property is slightly more than 59 acres. 36 acres of dedicated open space and 23 acres is where the resort was going to be built. Development agreement contains quite a few elements that took considerable time for us to put together. They include a general plan amendment, a rezoning, a cut waiver, a parking waiver, hillside protection easement modifications, public improvements, both onsite and offsite, and special use permits. This is a second amendment to the development agreement. This amendment seeks a five-year extension of the expiration date to March 2016. Property owners are requesting this extension due to the current economy. Staff recommends that the town council approve the proposed amended development agreement as presented. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone from the public on this item?
Yes, sir. Lindsay Shuby.
All right, thanks. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lindsay Shuby with the Law Firm with B. Gilbert. I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening, and, you know, I don't have a formal presentation. I believe staff did a very good job of explaining the second amendment to the development agreement, but if you have any questions, I'm available.
All right, good. Thank you very much, Ms. Shuby. Bob, question, and we'll work for a motion here is, actually, let me just get a motion here first and have discussion. Councilmember Dickey.
I move that the town council approve the second amendment to the Fountain Hills Conference Resort and Spa Development Agreement as presented.
All right, for a second. Bob, on the item, what has changed in the development agreement? Just to be clear.
There's some minor changes, but the most significant one is the expiration date. And it was due to expire this year due to lack of activity, basically. There was a two-year, I think, timeline on it.
So we've had a development agreement for some time. We had an amendment to it, and now we have a second amendment, which largely changes the expiration date.
Correct.
Good. Any questions or comments, discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Andrew, should the motion reflect the resolution number?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it should. And one other note about that, the first page of the second amendment has a date from our prior council meeting when this was intended to be presented. We'll be swapping that page out before the signatures are attached to, well, signatures are already attached, but we're going to swap the pages out so that the motion should include both the resolution number and acknowledgement that we have swapped out of the first page of the agreement.
Do we need to restate the motion?
If we could, just make sure we get the resolution included.
Councilmember Dickey, do you know I have the resolution number here? 2011-10.
Yes, move that town council approve the second amendment to the Fountain Hills Conference Resort and Spa Development Agreement to include resolution 2011-10 as presented. I'm sorry?
And the date. And the date corrected.
It was corrected today. As corrected on 3/17/11.
Good, thanks. Do we have a second? All right. Any other, thanks, Bob, any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 70.
Thank you very much. All right, item number six, consideration of approving payment to Tyler Technologies for past due annual software maintenance contract in the amount of $60,000 for fiscal year 9, 10, and fiscal year 10, 11. Welcome back on this one, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Back in 2008, the council approved an investment in a software package for the town and municipal software that would encompass all of the programs. And we purchased it and went live with that in July of 2009. Subsequent to the purchase of it, we also were required to pay for the annual maintenance of it, which included service calls, calls for service on it. In the meantime, we had paid a significant amount of money for training, and we had some issues with the training when we went live. There was some, it created some problems for us, and so we had a disagreement with the vendor that we did not pay that first year of maintenance because we were not happy with the level of service we'd gotten in the training. Subsequent to that, we met several times with the company, and the vice president came out and finally saw what our issues were, and we came to an agreement that they would waive half of that maintenance fee for the first year. And so what is before you tonight is that half of the year that they agreed to of maintenance for last year, as well as the maintenance for this year. And as I said before, the program is a very good program. We have no issue with the program. It was just the training that we received, and they agreed to that, and so that's where we are today.
Thank you. And appreciate it. This is the same item or similar, and we had discussion on it, our public work study session you went over?
Yes, Mayor, it's the exact, exact same thing.
All right, good. And we can't take action there, so here's where we're looking to take action. Good. Any one from the public on this one?
No, Mayor.
All right, council, look first for a motion to approve this. Anyone?
Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
Mayor, I move to approve payment to Tyler Technologies for the annual software maintenance.
Good, second? Someone?
Second.
Councilmember Dickey. All right, discussion on item. I think it's good to have some similar, probably discussion for the public's benefit if they, if they didn't listen to the public here, the public work study. This item's obviously something that carries over several fiscal years, relates to the financial program that we, all departments are a part of, that has brought us a great deal of benefit. The training didn't go real smoothly, so you negotiated a lesser cost on the annual quote-unquote "maintenance plan." Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. And additionally, even though we had not paid for the maintenance, the company continued to provide customer support. Whenever we called and had a support problem, they provided that, so there was never any interruption in their service, even though we hadn't paid.
And otherwise, this would have had things gone as smoothly as they would have, should have been, how much would this have cost us over the same fiscal two years?
Mayor, members of the council, we would have paid the 46,000, almost $50,000 in 9, 10. And we had budgeted it in 9, 10. We just never paid it.
Okay, so instead, we're paying 60 over two fiscal years?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with discussion or questions? Good, thank you. Did a good, good explanation, I think, of the work study in particular to help us understand this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. No one from the public? We'll look for everyone to see if they're in favor. All indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 70.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Julie. Item number seven, consideration of authorizing the transfer from the contingency expenditure line item within the Town Manager Division to the Community Services Department's maintenance line items in the amount of $26,278 to repair town recreation facilities. You going to take this, Julie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Back when we prepared the budget for the current fiscal year that we were in, the economy was still wavering, and we weren't sure where we were going to go, so we included in the budget about a $225,000 contingency line item for in the event that revenues didn't come in, we wanted to make sure that we, we didn't overspend. And so subsequent to that, we've had seven months, eight months now, of revenues that have gone by, and it appears the revenues are coming in just as we projected, so there is $225,000 in the contingency line item that we likely are not going to need. So we took this opportunity to take a look at some projects that had been put in the budget but had to be taken out because of costs and are not included in next year's budget, but are very, kind of a priority to do. And so we took this opportunity to propose to the council that we take some of that contingency money and make those improvements to the parks and also to the civic center.
All right, good. Thank you. Anyone from the public on this item, Beth?
No, sir.
All right, council, look for a motion on this item.
Mayor, move to approve the transfer of appropriations from the contingency expenditure line item within the Town Manager Division Administrative Department of the General Fund Budget to the Community Services Department's Facilities Maintenance Line Item in the amount of $26,278 to repair town recreation facilities.
Second. All right, thank you. Discussion or questions, council? In our report, it specifies a couple, Julie, the items that it's going to cover. Would you mind going over those, what the improvements, what the dollars are going to be covering?
Mayor, with your permission, I'll bring up the department director. This would be for Mark Mayer. He has, he can talk about the specific project. Thank you.
Hi, Mark.
Hello, Mayor Schlem and members of the council. The improvements are slated for three different areas. First of all would be the four tennis courts that are at Golden Eagle Park at $17,000. The pickleball courts, which there are six of, three of them along Golden Eagle Boulevard and three in back of the high school, for a total of $6,356. And finally, the two basketball courts that are located off of Golden Eagle Boulevard, that's $6,100 for a total of $29,456,000, excuse me, $456. And then the school district agreed to pay half the cost of the pickleball courts, which reduced that overall cost then to $26,278. It was brought up last time whether or not the school district had the money in this year's budget or was it a capital improvement budget. Unfortunately, I tried several times to reach the school district and was able to leave messages, but I did not get a call back, so I wasn't able to verify that. But we do have a contingency in there to sense that the priorities for us would be to do the tennis courts first, the pickleball courts second, and then if the school district was subsequently not able to fund their portion, then we'd be looking at simply not doing the basketball courts, which is the lowest priority.
Thank you. Is this something that if, that you would be looking to have in next year's budget if, if it's not, since it wasn't in this year's budget?
Well, the difficulty is, as you know, is that the budget situation is not any easier next year. It's extremely tight. We have not now resurfaced the courts for several years because of the budget situation, and there's some advantages to doing it at this time of year. One of the products that's not surprisingly used in this is petroleum, and we all know what's happening with petroleum prices. So that's a little of our concern. The second of all is the seasonal timing. If we do it this time of year, as we move into the early fall, we can catch it before the playing season. If we wait until the fall or try to wait until the next fiscal year, then it probably just puts it off till this year, next time, at the very earliest. And again, we know the budget situation. There just isn't any flexibility in next year's budget. So that's the reason why we were thinking about bringing it forward at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Um, Mark, at our work study session, there was a pickleball player that came and spoke to improving the pickleball courts, and she said that some people had actually tripped and fallen because of the cracks in the pavement. Is the safety also an issue at the tennis courts?
It is an issue, probably less so than the pickleball courts. The pickleball courts are concrete. The other courts are bituminous, so it's a little easier to patch those, the bituminous than it is the concrete sometimes. Just because there's a crack there, what it tends to affect sometimes, at the very least, is at least playability. If you start to get a wider crack or you get some settling on one side, then you really have some safety issues. And we're starting to get some of those safety issues down there. When they go in and do the resurfacing, they do crack filling first, and then they put the cover surface over the top of that. So in addition to making them safer, it also looks like basically a brand-new court, and the cracks literally disappear.
Since we have had a couple incidents, is there any benefit of doing the pickleball courts before the tennis courts?
There is. Part of the reason for doing the pickleball courts for is the amount of play that they receive. The basketball courts, because we do have a series of those scattered throughout the community, it didn't seem to be as high a priority for the staff as the pickleball courts, which get a lot, a lot of use.
No, I'm sorry. I meant pickleball courts before the tennis courts.
Well, again, I think it's the amount of play that we get there. The tennis courts are literally the only set of courts that exist in the whole town, at least four at one place, so they get a tremendous amount of use, especially this time of year. The pickleball courts get some usage, but not the same volume that we get over at the tennis courts, so that was kind of the thinking. That's why we set the priorities the way we did, as the tennis courts first, the pickleball courts second, and then the basketball courts third.
That was interesting. I appreciated our resident that did come and speak to that, and didn't she say that we were only one of two of pickleball courts in the valley?
Yeah. Sure is good. Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I had some people from the tennis courts saying, just with the new covering on the top, wasn't going to really do it. Can you add to that?
Mayor Schlum and Vice Mayor Cantino, I'm not sure what they were referring to. Did they give any more specific?
Underground more, the bottom has to be brought up and resurfaced, and then put the layer on the top.
Well, again, that's something that we'll probably have to do down the road, but that would be tremendously expensive. You'd literally have to grind it down and start all over again.
But are we just putting a Band-Aid on this?
Well, I think you are. Anytime you go and resurface tennis courts, it's not unlike the roads. Between the time that they fail, you go in and do chip sealing and recoating and doing those kinds of activities. It doesn't any different on another bituminous surface that happens to be tennis courts. Obviously, they don't get the wear and tear that roads get, or the heavy traffic with trucks and that, but it's still kind of the same principle. But I haven't seen a lot of settling and major cracks on the tennis courts, but at some point, yes, they will have to be reconstructed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments, questions? All right, we've got a motion second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, seven-zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Julie. Next item's a consideration of authorizing transfer from the contingency expenditure line item within the Town Manager Division to the Development Services Department Facilities Maintenance Line Item in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two-hundred to repair Civic Center mechanical equipment. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, similar to the item previous to this one, this is another item that we figure, we believe is pretty critical to the operation of the town and Town Hall, and the Development Services Director, Paul Moot, is here to answer any questions about the specific project, but the amount of transfer that we would request would be thirty-two thousand, two-hundred.
All right, thank you, Julie. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right. Could we get a motion on this item? Counsel? All right, so we'll look to, since it's a budgetary transfer, probably need a little more detail. Is that correct, Andrew, or so moved good enough, since I read it?
So moved good enough.
So moved, good. Vice Mayor's got the motion. Can we get a second? A second? Good. Any discussion or questions, staff on this item? I'd answer, just like, probably a little more detail on these significant items being replaced or worked on, so if we could get Paul up here. Welcome, Mr. Moot. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Mayor and councilmembers, this budget transfer would be for the repair of three pumps in the physical plant that provide water from the cooling tower to the chillers, and then one pump from the chillers that go to all three buildings in the Civic Center complex, and that is Town Hall, the library, and the community center, and that cooled water provides the air conditioning for the town. Right now, we have two pumps that bring the water to all the buildings. One has the gears grinding, and it is not in use, so we are only using the backup pump. Should that fail in the summer months, we'd be without air conditioning. The other two pumps that provide the water from the cooling tower to the chillers, those either have issues with the gears, and both are leaking at this time. So should one of those go down, we would not be able to provide proper air conditioning to the buildings in the summer. And then the other, and the other two, and that's about a twenty-five-thousand-dollar item to repair those, replace those three pumps. And then it's, then we have two other items. We want to repair an air handling unit at the community center for one of the ballrooms that isn't functioning properly, and also an air handling unit in the library that focuses on the children's area. So that's about another seventy-two-hundred dollars. The numbers we have are from one quote. We will go out and make sure we get a minimum of three quotes, so we do get the best price.
Good, including our local folks, our local suppliers.
If there is one, we will.
Good. We've got a motion second. No one from the public? We got any questions for staff, or discussion on item? I know we've been, we talked about this at the work study as well, briefly. So I guess at this time, I'll look for a motion, or I call the vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, seven-zero.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Paul. It's Julie. Item number nine, discussion, consideration, and possible direction to staff relating to the February seventeenth, two thousand and eleven Agenda Item directing the Town Manager to repair the appropriate written notification documentation terminating the representation of the law firm of Gus Rosenfeld, P L C, for Town Attorney Services, which was continued to the work study session held on March eighth, two thousand and eleven, at which no action was taken. The discussion may include, but is not limited to, the recent attorney, Arizona Attorney General's report dated February one, two thousand and eleven. And since this is a continuation of this item, I'll look for, actually, first, let's see if there's anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We don't really have a staff report on this. I'll just turn over to counsel for discussion or action on this item. Any discussion on item? Councilmember Alkey?
Thank you. Mayor, I think it's important to recognize that there was a motion in the second from our February seventeenth meeting to terminate the services of Gus Rosenfeld as Town Attorney for the town of Fountain Hill, so I think it's important to recognize it was continued to work study session, but that motion is still on the table. I just want to make sure as far as point of order. Am I correct, Mr. McGuire?
Mr. Mayor, we can continue it that way, just from the motion, or you can restate the motion. Either way is fine.
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that there is still motion on the table. What I think is important also is that we had to recap some of the things before continuing with the discussion, because there was a lot that was discussed during the work study session of March eighth, about ten days ago now, and certainly, there was a lot of discussion on February seventeenth at the regular agenda. Now, this does relate to the performance of Mr. McGuire as one of three appointed persons within the town, and I think it's important, Mayor, that before we go forward, that we have Mr. McGuire's consent to discuss issues related to his performance with the town. I believe he previously made a statement to that effect, that it was that it was his preference to have these things out in open discussion, but I want to make sure, because these are going to relate to his specific performance as the Town Attorney, that we are able to do so, as he does have the right to have those discussions, as I understand, in e-session.
Thank you, Councilmember Alkey. Mr. McGuire?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alkey, I don't know if it's necessary, but I'll be very more than happy to restate what I did at the work session, that I believe that, and it was in response to a comment that perhaps we should be in e-session to discuss this as exception one to the open meeting law allows, I wanted to be clear that if it were agendized that way as an e-session, that I would exercise the right under that statute to bring it back out in public, and that's been my clear preference ever since, and I want, any discussion about this needs to be in public. We need to have everything discussed here, so that there's no question about what was discussed.
I think it's really items, I mean, simply put, really items related to performance, you want to have, your performance specifically, or the firm's performance you want to have in public.
Anything having to do with legal services, I want to have discussion in public.
Thank you. Councilmember Alkey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of recap, for those that maybe are just catching up a little bit, and may know some bits and pieces, or have heard some things, and just to make sure that everything's clear, at least from my point of view or perspective, based on the information that's been presented. There was a complaint that was filed by one council member against another council member last year, as I understand, the summer was around the time that the complaint was filed. Our Town Attorney received a call, as he's reported late last year, from the Assistant Attorney General's Office, and Ms. Alakarn, who informed him of this ongoing investigation, that there is inquiry about an e-session violation, and the discussion lasted by Mr. McGuire's admission about twenty minutes, and she requested in addition, e-session minutes for the meeting that was the subject of the original complaint. Following that, as has been stated, Mr. McGuire did not inform counselor staff about his inquiry, or the inquiry by the Assistant Attorney General's Office. There was no communication made to council about this complaint that was made that does carry potential ramifications, of which can include criminal charges, removal from office, and sanctioning, as was voted and approved by the council at the February seventeenth meeting. Sanctioning may be a hard word, but we accepted the report and are taking the penalty, which included an open meeting law or e-session class. In any event, through our discussions, Mr. McGuire, again, didn't, because he didn't inform the council of this complaint, there was a final finding that was issued in the report by Ms. Alakarn of February first, two thousand and eleven, that reached a finding that the council had discussed matters in e-session related to personnel that they shouldn't have discussed, and as a result, therefore, council, if they accepted the finding and the remedy, then we'd have to do some open meeting law training. The issue that I took with the way this matter was handled, as I reported not only on the seventeenth, but during the work study session, which unfortunately is only available through audio, but was that we weren't informed. Now, as the Town Attorney represents the public body of the town, not only in all matters legal, but in my opinion, all matters related to public relations, and should do his utmost to protect the council and the town in any way possible. In my opinion, and the reason I moved to terminate the services of Gus Rosenfeld, is because I felt that Mr. McGuire's performance as our Town Attorney fell far short than what it should have been, and the lack of communication to the council about this investigation that was ongoing. The fact that he didn't have a formal complaint, I think, is a moot issue. If you get a phone call from the Assistant Attorney General's Office saying, I'm investigating a potential e-session violation of your council, I think that it's extremely important that after you get off the phone with that Assistant Attorney General, you phone the council, you inform the council, and you let them know that this is something that could be coming down the road. The only explanation that the council has received was that Mr. McGuire was waiting for a more formal complaint for the Assistant Attorney General's Office, and therefore did not communicate to the council. The fact that the council received this complaint on February first, two thousand and eleven, or, excuse me, not the complaint, but the letter and the finding and the remedy that's being recommended, the council having to then subsequently agendize this item at the next regular meeting, which was a condition, and vote on it approximately two weeks later, I think was a disservice to the council and the town, which is why I moved to, again, terminate the services of our Town Attorney. With that, Mayor, I don't have any further discussion, or, excuse me, any additional opening as far as summary, but I certainly invite any other council that may want to comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Alkey. Any other comments on this item, this agenda item? Councilmember Hanson?
I did have a clarification. I was going through the last six months of billing, since we were having this discussion of our, do we, do we want to continue contracting, or do we want to look at having our legal services in-house? And as I was reviewing the billing statement, which kind of gives you a good idea of what our attorney does, and what he spends his time on, and it was quite interesting, but something that caught my eye, that disturbed me, was the fact that it appears that he was contacted by the A G.'s office back in August, and had a subsequent meeting with the Town Manager, and I was disturbed. I was upset that we were not informed after the late-in-the-year comment, which I thought maybe was in December. And then to find out that the contact was made in August, it was that, you know, we knew about this. We knew that they were proceeding with this, and I found that disturbing.
Thanks, Councilmember Hanson. Mr. McGuire, you want to comment on that item? I know a similar item, I don't, I think you are pointing out, Councilmember Hanson, that's a different date or a different item, that there was conversation from our Town Attorney to staff or awareness of our Town Attorney. I think that's...
It would indicate that we had been alerted months in advance.
Thanks. Councilmember Alkey?
Thank you. As has been said by Mr. McGuire a number of times, he was informed late last year, whether August is late last year, I guess is subject to debate, but the fact that there's a billing statement that says that he informed our Town Manager of the subject of the conversation, and it didn't go any further from there, now, I have some concerns if the information was held, because I was waiting for a more formal complaint, but it was communicated to our Town Manager, and it wasn't held, you know, important enough to communicate to our Town Council by either of these two gentlemen. I just have a real concern. I'd like an explanation.
Mr. McGuire?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we discussed at some length at the work session, at the time that the original complaint was lodged, and I was informed by Councilmember Dickey that this was a possibility that would be lodged, I was made aware then that everybody was informed. The only thing I found out later on was that Vice Mayor Cantino was the only one who was not informed. So upon the A G.'s first contact with me, in my mind, it was very clear that all the other council members knew that this was underway. This was the first, it was a telephone call inquiry, it wasn't a written inquiry, it wasn't any kind of notification of any other kind, other than, can you send me the e-session minutes and explain to me what the purpose of the e-session was? Mr. Davis literally walked into the office as I was finishing that telephone call, and was the only person in the, on the dais here, besides the town clerk, who I was aware was unaware at the time. As I've said publicly before, and as I'll say again, had I known that the one call and done was what we were going to get from the A G.'s office, rather than a more formal written complaint, of course, I would have informed the council. If the gap between August now, and late in the year, and I appreciate the fact that you understand that my comments were not saying any specific date, that it was sometime late last year that we talked about, August, September, that's really immaterial. What's material is that we have an informal communication that at the time, I believe, did not communicate anything that all of you didn't already know. Knowing what I know now, of course, follow-up call, easy to make that call with twenty-twenty judgment, harder to make that call when it's the time of the complaint, and knowing that can be the result, of course, that will change future behavior on it. But we need to be very clear, at the time of that conversation with the Assistant Attorney General, and still today, I think that the opinion that they rendered was rendered incompletely and did not, and we don't agree with it, but that's not the position that we're taking in terms of moving forward. When I was informed by the Assistant A G., that no matter what the result of completing that investigation, the penalty was still going to be the same, it seemed to be an inefficient use of resources to continue on in providing more information, having some of our citizens be subject to interview, who were provided, their names are provided in the complaint, and to have town staff, who also were involved in the complaint, have their time and energy put into something that would have the exact same end result.
Mayor? Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Just one of the first things that you said was one council person made a complaint, but actually, there were two of us at the time, well, I shouldn't say that, but Mike Archambeau and I, we made the complaint because it was brought to our attention that there had been a breach, and of course, I said at the work study session that I regretted not having the courage to come to people myself, but everybody did know about it in May, that I had done that, because I wanted to get that to the A G.'s office, because I really wanted, I wanted there to be an investigation. And then I never heard back at all, the entire time, so I thought that they just weren't going to pursue it, and I just really dropped it, and I did drop it, and I never called back and tried to do anything else. Just thought, well, at the time, when things were happening, I was concerned that there was going to be others that were going to point the finger at us as breaching executive session. I happen to believe that was the case, so I thought, well, I'm not going to do this on my own, I'm going to do what's proper, and I did. And it was not something that is publicized or anything like that, and it's my right to do, and I did it. So when I never heard, literally, until this letter, I was just really thought that it just wasn't something that they felt had merit, you know, and they can do that too, so, and to this day, I haven't, I haven't been informed about this as an individual or former Councilman Archambeau, as a person who actually brought it forward, so I don't really know what the process or protocol or anything is, because if that's it, then they really didn't see any reason to inform me or Mike that this had been, that they were progressing. And as we now know, they didn't actually investigate the executive session aspect of it. of it. They investigated, they've decided that, well, this is what we think, and here's the remedy. The remedy's the same, and that's why I was willing to accept it, because the remedy's the same. And that's really, that's really all it is.
Councilmember Elke?
I think there's an important point. Mr. McGuire might understand that Councilmember Dickey told you that she told all the other council members. Is that, just so we're on the same page here, that she told you that she told all the other council members she filed a complaint?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, that's correct.
Okay. You later learned that Vice Mayor Cantino was not informed?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, I learned that in February of this year.
Okay. Now, having been informed of the complaint, you think it's appropriate to rely on a council member to communicate the filing of the complaint to all the council? To rely on that? Or wouldn't you agree that it'd be better for you to communicate to everyone, to make sure everybody is on the same page?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, as I stated before, if this had been an investigation and had gone in any way as prior ones had gone, the first phone call is the first phone call, followed by other phone calls, followed sometimes by written inquiry, followed by more information. As I said, had I known that this was one phone call and done, absolutely. Now, let's be very, very clear, so nobody in the public is confused at all about how these things work. The Arizona Attorney General's investigations through their omelet division, the open meeting law enforcement team, are not open to the public. The complaints are sealed and confidential. They won't give those out under even a public records request, or even to the investigated group. The complaint would not have been provided to the town if requested. We have no opportunity for hearing. We have only the opportunity to respond to what we're asked. So I want to make sure everybody understands that full disclosure, in this case, may not have resulted in anything different.
Yeah, just wanted to, Councilmember Elke. I think there's a, we're kind of convoluted things. I think there's a difference between assuming or being told that all the council are informed of this complaint. Obviously, in retrospect, not everybody was, the subject of the complaint, you know, not everybody was. And, but I think there's a difference between not telling everyone because you assume that they knew, and not telling everyone that you were contacted, or that Mr. McGuire was contacted by the Assistant Attorney General's office about this investigation is being furthered. There's information that's being requested, specifically e-session minutes. There's a big difference between that. And again, I'd like to also hear from our town managers to, when there was this communication between you and Mr. McGuire, and you're informed that this Assistant Attorney General, you were made aware, and there was e-session requests, I mean, it was out there, our home clerk would have had to have provided those. Where was the communication? Where was the breakdown there?
Mr. Davis, you want to comment on the communication? That's what I think is what we're talking about here, is communication.
Yeah, on the occasion that I was made aware of a complaint, I didn't, I don't recall any details relative to the complaint or the investigation, only that such complaint had been filed. It was not a long conversation. In fact, I don't remember any specifics, again, regarding the investigation. I also was not under the assumption that I had received information that anyone else couldn't receive. I'd never been a part of such an investigation, so I thought that such information is readily available, or that it would be communicated at some time if it came to fruition. There was also no indication at that time that this was anything of any substance, or that it would result in the February communication we got from the Attorney General. It was largely forgotten at that point until it, when everybody else received notice. That's when I also became aware that it had, that the Attorney General's office had actually addressed the issue.
Mr. McGuire?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to note, too, that the, at the time of the communication, the open meeting law complaint that was filed had nothing to do with the actual meeting itself. It had to do with disclosures following that meeting. So, you know, like I said before, it's very easy to put the 20-20 goggles on and find that there is something that you could have done differently. But the state of mind of, at the time, the complaint was not on that whole meeting. The complaint was on an individual isolated incident. Now, she asked for the minutes. We discussed the minutes. We discussed the contents of it. I explained to her that the same presentation that the town manager made in e-session to explain the restructuring was presented to the public at the next meeting. That there was nothing in any way clandestine about it, that the same information was provided unmodified from one meeting to the next. So I think it's important to keep that in mind and where we were in the process at the time.
I believe, Councilmember Elke, be sure, put his hand up first there. Councilmember Dickey?
Andrew, I'm looking at your billing statements prepared by you, and something that you just said, you said that the discussion was related to the e-session violation, and your billing specifically states held discussion, excuse me, telephone call from C. Alarcon regarding open meeting law complaint with respect to meeting held to discuss reduction in force, meeting with R. Davis regarding same. Now, that's different than what you just said, in that it was regarding the e-session violation. It was more broad than that, and you've said so in previous meetings, that this 20-minute discussion that you had from her related to the topics, and she wanted to know, she wanted a copy, Ms. Alarcon wanted a copy of the e-session minutes. So you knew at that time that it was much broader than this narrow e-session violation. So, you know, again, not communicating to the council that this is ongoing, that this is an investigation that's ongoing, that you have received a call from the Assistant Attorney General, and that communicating that information to the town manager, who didn't communicate it to us either. You know, again, I just can't, I just don't understand why that seems to be okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, I think I've been very clear every time this topic's come up, that had we known at the time of that telephone call that it was one call and done, that the communication would have been back to the council. It is not consistent with previous experience with the AG's office. On your point about what was discussed, my billing statement is exactly accurate, and it is very consistent with what I just said. What I just said to you is that during that call, she asked me to explain what the e-session was about. Why was it held? Because the complaint was about things that were discussed in e-session that were then discussed out in public. She was trying to understand what was discussed in e-session to understand the context of what was discussed in public. That was, the length of the discussion was walking her through what was done. It was, in no time during that conversation was she saying that the thing was going to be truncated at that point, because she thinks there was an open meeting violation. She said, "I'd like to know what was going on in this investigation. I'd like to know what was going on during this session. Please explain to me the purpose of it, because I want to make sure that I understand what was discussed inside and outside the meeting."
If I could, we'll go over to Vice Mayor Cantino, who's been patient. Yes, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. McGuire, I really don't care what certain findings are done with the Attorney General's office on other cases. My case, I was indicted, or involved in, that came back, that was about illegal open session meeting. You should have informed us what that was about, back in August. And I don't have any faith or any trust in you for doing that, for what you have been doing, and along with Mr. Davis discussing this whole thing. How can we, as a town, believe you, as an attorney, from August till February? You kept this from us. How many people in the town hall knew about this? All my colleagues knew about it. I didn't know about it. I didn't know about it, so I saw this letter that you gave us in February. What the hell were you doing?
Councilmember, Vice Mayor. Mr. McGuire?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Cantino, I was doing exactly what we do every day.
Yes, right.
The town's business. And because we have no ability to intervene in the investigation, because we have no ability to even inquire about it other than as to its status, because we have no ability to see the complaint itself, there was nothing for us to do. The initial conversation, as you'll recall, was not about the e-session itself. The initial conversation, the initial complaint, I mean, was about disclosures from that e-session out in the public. My discussion with her was entirely focused on the e-session contents, in order that she could evaluate the discussion of those items in public.
I think that you held back on us on doing everything. The other thing was that, going back to this thing with discussing with the manager, how many people in town hall of the staff knew this was going on? How many people knew about the complaint in town hall? All the staff knew, or all the, my colleagues knew. You don't think my colleagues said anything?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I have no idea to whom council members have spoken and discussed the information that they learned in May of last year. I have no way of knowing.
Well, all of a sudden, I'm hearing leaks all over the place. And I tell you, this goes back to you and what you're doing, and you're not informing us for what's going on. I don't care what happens. I was the guy that was named in it. You should have came to me and asked me about this when this was going on in here in the AG's office. And if I wasn't indicted or anything else in here, why didn't you come back and talk to us about the open meeting law? If you didn't have anything to hide? That's my question.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cantino, as we discussed, when the original complaints came in, you'll recall that I sent emails and contacted you to ask you about the incidents in question, and I wasn't, I didn't receive anything back from you. So I want to make sure we're very, very clear here, that there's absolutely no reason for me to have not disclosed this, other than not understanding where it was going to go next in the AG's office.
Well...
As you can see from the time that has passed, that August to February, with no further inquiry, even to the complainants, that this item was not on the fore.
But she gave you an answer.
Vice Mayor. If we could, we'll come back if we need to, if you have some more questions of staff or discussion on it. Councilmember Dickey goes up next.
Oh, Mayor, thank you. Again, I am sorry I didn't come to you straight. I did tell, you know, Councilmember Cassie Hansen and Tate, I shouldn't have assumed you, maybe you're saying he shouldn't have assumed, we all knew, I guess I shouldn't have assumed that you would have told Councilman Cantino. So I regret that I didn't have the courage or whatever to come to you myself. But I certainly felt, look, let's get back to the public part of it. It's not, it's not a big public thing. It wasn't at all. And that's what I want you to understand. It was never a public thing, and nothing ever came of it. So it, as far as I knew, and, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong about whether Mike heard anything, it was just a done deal.
Then why did you do it in the first place?
Well, excuse me, Mayor, I did it, I think I explained that, because I was led to believe that there were concerns, not only of myself, but of others, that there had been a breach. And that breach wasn't just a gossip breach, it was a breach that I felt put the town at risk. So I wanted to try to mitigate that. You know, there were a couple of weeks in there where we were all on edge about some stuff that could have happened, that could have damaged the town. I have no other reason for that, except that that was a very risky time. Then when it went by, sorry, and it was, and nothing happened, that's it. I mean, it's not like it was discussed, or in the paper, or anything else like that. I didn't hear one word since then, and I had dropped it.
Mayor? Vice Mayor?
I think there was intent, and I go back to the attorney and the town manager for not being responsible. Our fields, our things that we have up here, and you know we have four-three votes all the time, we don't communicate. We don't communicate. This goes back to the leadership of what we have. And you're a part of it, Mr. Davis, and Mr. McGuire, you're the attorney that should be advising us on it. At this present moment, I can't trust either one of you. I have no faith and trust in you. And as you know, Mr. Davis, Councilwoman Hansen and myself, we decided to have our meetings on one-on-one together, so we could get both of the stories straight, because we kept getting different stories. And I'm sorry, but this is something that goes back to Mr. McGuire trying to help us in this town, and I have no faith and trust in either one of you.
Mayor? Councilmember Elke?
Well, first, I bring it back to the issue related to legal services and what we're here to discuss as far as this agenda item. One, when a council member tells our town attorney that there's a complaint filed against another council member, I think it's our town attorney's responsibility to communicate that to town manager, which apparently happened, and then for them to communicate that to the rest of the mayor and council. The fact that a council member may have said, "I told everybody," is irrelevant. It's not my responsibility to convey information of that nature to other council members. And I will say, I kept the information to myself. I didn't think it was my duty to communicate that to anybody. And frankly, if someone had, you know, if there's a, as I've said before, if there's a basis to file a complaint, that complaint should be thoroughly investigated and get to the bottom of it, and if any one of us does anything wrong, we should be held accountable for that. Similarly, I think, Mr. McGuire, you're downplaying the fact that you didn't tell us after the Attorney General's office called you. You knew about the complaint, waiting, waiting, filed back in May. You get a phone call asking for further investigation, including the minutes. And then the explanation for not then communicating to the council that you got the phone call from the Assistant Attorney General's office is, well, I was waiting for a formal complaint or a request for more information, or something else to happen from that point forward, and when you didn't hear anything, assumed it was over and done with. And February came, and all of a sudden, I assume it is, as you've communicated, it was a big surprise to you, it was probably more of a surprise to the rest of us, since we didn't know that the Attorney General was continuing this investigation. As Councilmember Dickey has pointed out, she didn't, she assumed that nothing was happening with this. You were informed in August that the Assistant Attorney General was asking for information. As an attorney myself, if I get a phone call from someone saying, "I'm investigating your client for X," thank you for the information, I'm gonna call client and let them know this investigation, you know, I've got a phone call from this person, they're investigating you for this offense, or they're potentially going to sue you, something along those lines, I am not going to wait for a complaint to be filed. I think there's some things that we could have done prior to that complaint, or prior to this finding, you know, as you said, one and done. Yep, one and done, we get the one letter, and, you know, the investigation's done. If a complaint had been filed, there would have been an investigation, there would have been a different route that would have been taken. I think from the point that the Assistant Attorney General called forward, we could have done something. We could have been informed. We could have had more time to consider what the possible ramifications are, as opposed to just being handed this, saying, "Here's the findings, here's the remedy that's being suggested, except or not, I'm suggesting that you do let this be done with." I mean, that was really how it was communicated to us. We had no opportunity to kind of circle the wagons, communicate in an e-session about this. And that's the issue that I have, that, and you say, in retrospect, had you not known that she was gonna be one and done, I think misses the point that if there's a communication from the Assistant Attorney General's office regarding something involving that can cause removal of one of us, then it's gotta be communicated. We don't wait for the complaint. Mr. McGuire, if you get a call from Assistant Attorney General's office tomorrow, who says, "I'm investigating a complaint that's been filed against the town, or the, excuse me, the town, I'd like regular agenda minutes from this, or these minutes from that," are you going to communicate to us that the Assistant Attorney General has called you about the complaint?
Mr. McGuire?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, and I guess if I wasn't clear enough about this before, I'll say it again. Having known, having known what we know now, that this can be just one phone call, and then a resultant 10-month-later finding, of course, and that's why I said, the first night that we discussed this, that's why I said in the work session, and that's why I said earlier tonight, of course, and it's very easy, in retrospect, to come to that conclusion. And I want to make another thing very clear here. We need to be aware of the client. You pointed out that if a client were aware of that, that my client is the corporate entity of Town Fountain Hills. The corporate entity is not an individual council member. I don't represent any one of you individually. I can't represent any one of you individually. So at the time the complaint was made, and I was made aware of it, it was not a complaint that affected the corporate entity. It was a complaint against a single member, for which the corporate entity can't even provide a... provide a defense unless you all in this public setting vote to have a defense.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, that's, I wanted to ask you, Andrew, because I thought at the other meeting you had said we wouldn't have been able to circle the wagons or do anything like that. There was no reaction that we could have taken because she was just still asking you questions. I thought that's what you had said on the eighth.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, and it is why I said on the eighth, because we weren't even allowed to and still wouldn't be allowed to see the con, the contents of the complaint. The Attorney General's office was gracious in allowing people the opportunity to, to place phone calls, but in the end, their investigation is based upon the, the information they asked for, they receive and they review. In this case, it's clear that as soon as the e-session minutes were received, that's all they needed. That's all she was looking for.
Mayor. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still staying the same, same way I did last time. I think we found a, a, I think, I think we've identified a situation with Mr. McGuire that he possibly could have done it differently, and he didn't. I don't, I don't see that we should be even having a discussion about firing the town attorney. He's been a good attorney for this town for many years. I don't think he has harmed the council. I don't think he's harmed the town. He's admitted that if, if he was to do it again, would do it differently. How many times has, have we had a complaint filed in the Town Fountain Hills, ever? You know, is it new to all of us? Possibly. Dennis, I, you know, Jenny has apologized to you and, and with full faithfulness, but, and I think we've taken one, one small bit of the town's problems, and we're trying to crucify an attorney over it, and if, if he's wrong, then our town attorney's wrong. I mean, our town manager's wrong. So, I mean, I, I don't see that, I think we're, we're clear off-base going down the road of saying, "Let's, let's replace everybody, let's fire everybody, let's start from scratch." I don't see it. I don't see that the harm is there. I don't see, I mean, I, Tate, I understand everything you're saying, but I don't think, I don't think it is at the level of firing or replacing a town attorney over. I mean, he has done a good job for this town. The one that needed to be fired that caused all the trouble was fired, and it wasn't by this, a few of the council members were on it, and I supported that. I wasn't part of it. But I don't see that Andrew McGuire has, has taken us down in lawsuits. I don't see that he's caused any trouble for us. I think that he has apologized, not apologized, he has explained himself to the point that, that he should, we, we need to back off this. We've got bigger problems in this town than worrying about what the AG gave us for a response to an investigation that was as weak as anything I've ever seen from a quote attorney. So, you know, with that being said, I think we all need to take a deep breath, step back. We, we could have continued the investigation and didn't, because this town has bigger problems than that, and we mean that. This town has got now even a bigger problem with their financial situation than we did a year ago, and we need to be focusing on and moving the town forward and not sitting here continually thrashing the town attorney and, and our town manager. I think we need to come together, as I've said before, and as you even said, we need to come together as council and talk a little bit and act like we're all in the same town. So, with that being said, that's where I'm at, and I'm probably not going to move very far from that.
Councilmember Brown, just, just an opportunity to remember to address the chair with comments, not directly to the council members. Thanks, Councilmember Brown. Vice Mayor.
I think Councilman Brown's got some good points, but my point is, I had the complaint set against me. I am going to go down to the Attorney General's office, and I am going to file again and find out what the complaint was, who made it, and what is going on. My name is still out there. My name has not been cleared. You want to take a breath and step back? My name is still there. My name's always going to be there till my name gets cleared. Let's go down, let's open this all up and get this thing all over. At this present point, my trust in the attorney is zero. Zero. As a council, elected official, I've been let down by my attorney. My town manager's the same way because he knew what the town attorney knew and they discussed it that day. Don't shake your head no, he knew what was going on.
Vice Mayor. Sounds like we've got some work to do on relationships here. Mr. McGuire, if you could, on what related to the AG's report, related to what Vice Mayor had shared about his name being cleared or not, did they, the Attorney General seemed to make a point of stating that there was nothing further, they weren't suggesting, discussing, or investigating any, there was nothing warranting further investigation. Is that, isn't that what it stated? I mean, certainly your Vice Mayor's prerogative to, to investigate where things are at himself, but I, I believe that was the, the letter stated that there, written regards to the initial complaint, that there was, there was no reason to go further.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the AG's opinion is based upon an, an old case that essentially says that if information was not supposed to be discussed in e-session, the disclosure of that information in public is not a violation of the open meeting laws. And that's where, why the investigation's truncated where it did. The further investigation, I can only imagine would be to parse out what information was in e-session that was discussed that shouldn't have been, and one of the highlighted things in the letters, the town manager's presentation that was made the following week in public, and what was actually legal advice. She didn't do any investigation to find out if there were pieces of what was disclosed that could, would have been legal advice properly in the e-session and then would actually be a violation. That's the only thing that's, that's left undone in this investigation.
Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. In reading this letter here, she was the head of the open meeting law enforcement team, omelette. In reading further into this, this is what she does. Open meeting law complaint. That got to her first. So, this lady, what's her name again?
Aragon, Assistant Attorney General Aragon, is it?
Mila Alagon.
Is only handles open meeting laws. So, she was not interested in the second part of this complaint. She wasn't concerned with that. When I got the letter in there, it said she was just the open meeting law attorney. And I sit back and I say, "We need to clear the record, open this up, and get all the cards on the table." And if we can't do that, then we're hiding something.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to provide a point of clarification that we discussed, and it's at quite a length on the, the work setting, no one in the Attorney General's office has committed 100% to open meeting violations. The open meeting law enforcement team is a second duty that's imposed upon a group of attorneys in the AG's office who otherwise have the job of representing, for instance, agencies or boards, you know, ADOT, any number of the, of the state's public bodies. It is their second job, it is not their primary job, it is something that they do as time permits, which explains the length of this, this investigation. It has not always been that way. There have been times in the AG's office, has had more people and been able to dedicate people to this role, but Ms. Alagon is just a member of that team. She is, like all the other Assistant Attorneys General who are also saddled with omelette duties.
Thank you. Just want to make, since we've discussed this amongst ourselves for a while, that's, did I already ask if there was someone from the public on this item, or had I not?
No, Mayor, we don't have anyone for this one.
Okay, that's, I, I may have asked, but there wasn't anyone, okay. Councilmember Dickey.
Um, Mayor, thank you. Is executive session part of open meeting law? Is that in the same sort of a category, or are they two separate things?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, the executive session provisions are exceptions to the open meeting law. They're found in the statutes where the open meeting law are, they're, they are part of the open meeting law. As you know, Arizona's, you know, what we commonly refer to as the sunshine law and open meeting law, says that all meetings of the, of the public body need to be in public. There are seven exceptions to that that are allowed to be discussed in an executive session. So, it is a carve-out to the open meeting law, it's not a separate entity.
So, Mayor, Andrew, the personnel that would look into either one of these would be the same, you know, expertise or that kind of thing?
Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, the, the folks who serve on the omelette committee, the omelette group, whatever we're going to call it, they all handle every aspect of the open meeting law. That's their, their sole purpose for that part of their job.
Okay. And Mayor, just one more thing, just because the letter has been around, there was a subsequent letter, the first one said that she could not definitively conclude that a specific town council member violated open meeting law. And then, on the letter from March 4th, which was a response to a letter that some council members had sent to her, she said, "The purpose of the report dated February 1st was to propose a settlement offer to resolve the pending investigation." So, I, I think that, that covers both if we're willing to accept that. You know, I, if I'm, I'm willing to accept that part as an answer to the original investigation, and so that, that sentence seemed to be a kind of a way to close the door on it.
I don't think so. Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Elke.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to kind of go back to the question I had asked Mr. McGuire earlier, I don't think I got an answer. But before going to that, Mr. McGuire made a point of saying that he doesn't represent any one individual council member. I, I don't disagree with Mr. McGuire's assessment. However, is responsible if individually council members or us collectively, there's a regular session or open meeting law violation of a regular agenda meeting, an e-session meeting, a work-study meeting, and there's an investigation, there is a duty for our town attorney to communicate that investigation to town manager and to council. And I think that is really the thrust of, of the, my major complaint is there wasn't that communication. Now, Mr. McGuire has said, had, you know, hindsight's 20/20 or something to that effect, but I, I, I still haven't gotten an answer as to if there was a call tomorrow, if we, someone in our community complained and said there was a open meeting law violation during a work-study or any other type of meeting, and an Assistant Attorney General called and said, "There's this complaint, please provide me with these minutes, please provide me with some information as I'm conducting this investigation," is our town attorney going to communicate that call to the council? And if the answer to that is still no, then I have a real big problem with that. I don't think it's our town attorney's prerogative to wait for a complaint to be filed. It's, it's us up here as individual council members and mayor, and us as the town, and for our town attorney to not communicate any investigation, regardless of what you perhaps may perceive that the normal course is going to do, that is really the issue here. And if our, if our town attorney's not going to communicate that to us, I have a real problem with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Elke. Mr. McGuire.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm befuddled at how this question hasn't been answered, because I answered it very clearly and said, "Yes, that communication will be made." I answered it earlier this evening twice, answered it in the work session more than one time, and I answered it in a private conversation with Councilmember Elke after the last meeting. So, I have no idea how many times I have to say, "Yes, if that communication came in today, I would make the call." That is exactly what I've said, and will say it as many times as asked.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Elke.
Now, what's been said, Mr. Mayor, is if I knew then what I know now about this one and done, then I would have notified the council. That's what's been said, it's been qualified. It hasn't been specifically said, "Yes, I see the error, that there was a mistake potentially made, I should have called and notified the council, then I got a call from the Assistant Attorney General." What we've had is qualified, a qualified answer that, "Had I known that it was going to be a one and done, I would have notified the council." That's the answer that we're getting, Mr. Mayor. Not, "Yes, I would have done, had it, you know, I would call, I'll make that call." It's, "If I knew then what I know now."
I understand, thank you. Councilmember Elke. Anyone else on this item? I think it's pretty clear, the communication that's, going forward and, and in hindsight or retrospect or in light that it was a unique call from an Attorney General's office, I think it's probably a foregone conclusion going forward. Council wants to make sure we're communicated with more than, in, in all cases similar to this, if there happen to be cases similar to this, but in all cases in general that relate to legal service. We'll have further opportunity, I think, in our next agenda item to even talk about that more, so I'll just hold off more on that till that time. Councilmember Hanson.
Um, just one last thing to reiterate, it, I think one of the issues was not just the fact that we weren't notified, and, and this goes back to the discussion we had when we voted on the, the investigation report itself and why we had a split vote. I think the fact that we went into an executive session that we shouldn't have gone into in the first place, and I think that's another piece of the puzzle of, of the, the comfort level of some of the, the judgment calls that are being made. So, I think that's just one thing to remember as well, and, and I think the fact that, you know, as a body, we are looking at this whole situation from different standpoints, and I think to some of us, it was a bigger deal than it was to other people. And, and when Jenny was reading from the, the March 4th letter, the next sentence after that about the settlement offer is that, "Since the majority of the council members voted, signed and approved the report and proposed remedy, our offers, our office considers the matter resolved." And, so it's not really saying to me that the matter was resolved, because I think there were lingering ques, excuse me, questions that were not answered. But because the, the majority of the council approved the settlement, then that's why it was resolved. So, I think that, you know, it kind of falls into, to some of the legal advice that, that we might be questioning, and for my own, I, I still go back to the work study, and I was the one that had issues with, with the way the, the agenda was written. I see some inconsistencies, going back to January when we had the, the summit, and we had a lot of consternation about the wording of that agenda, because there was a desire to have very, the ability to have a lot of discussion go on with the people that attended that, but if there was going to be a quorum of the council, that we needed to be very specific so that the public would know what was going to be discussed. Well, when we came to the work study, it seemed to be just the opposite of that. We were going for very broad language so that anything could be discussed, and then we got into the assumptions, and I think assumptions sometimes get us into trouble. So, I think, you know, in addition to the fact that, you know, what Tate's referring to, that, you know, we weren't notified, I, I think it's, you know, I just want to throw in a broader perspective that there were some other issues involved as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Legere.
I certainly respect everyone's opinion in this matter, and it's, it's clear from my perspective where I'm sitting, and I, I won't place judgment on Councilman Cantino or Councilman Elke or Councilwoman Hanson's confidence, if you may, in, in our, in our town attorney, and, and I can respect that, and I think you've articulated your reasons for your lack of trust in this particular issue. We've spent most of our time on this particular issue. Interestingly enough, when we had this first discussion in our first meeting, I had a resident come up to me and ask, "What does the town attorney do?" And my recommendation to that individual was, "Why don't you sit down or try to get some time with the town attorney and ask him what they do." I don't believe that meeting took place, and it's neither here nor there. What I would like to say publicly regarding the town attorney is the following. If one was to look at our agreement for legal services, this is a sample of what the town attorney is involved in. Drafting ordinances and resolutions, drafting and negotiating contracts and agreements, reviewing agendas and minutes, attending meetings of the town- reviewing agendas and minutes, attending meetings of the town council, attending meetings of other boards and commissions, coordinating with town staff, a review of documents prepared in-house, representing the town before administrative boards and local appellate courts, providing general legal advice and counsel in all areas such as election law, property law, planning and zoning, code enforcement, contract law, public bidding and contracts, personnel, improvement districts, litigation, development agreements, intergovernmental agreements, cable and franchise law, wireless telecommunication law, employee benefits, general state municipal law and federal law. And there's probably things that you could add to that. Why do I go through that long list? I go through that long list simply to state, once again, I understand the dissatisfaction that's been expressed regarding our attorney's performance. My evaluation of any employee, whether a contract employee or a full-time employee, goes to a sum total of their job competency based on the total of what their performance is, all the stuff, the whole enchilada, over the last five years that I've been on council. That's where I'm coming from, that's how I'm reviewing this particular situation. Would it have been best if, as we suggested, that we were communicated to? You know, if that's a requirement, and I'm not a lawyer, then sure, hopefully, well, not hopefully, it's stated that will occur next time. But with respect to that whole dialogue and communication, I'd like to point out, as elected officials, and I'll take responsibility for this, communication is a two-way process. I'll let you know what I did when I found out that there was this matter brought before the Attorney General. I called our town attorney, and I said, "What's up?" And he educated me, as he has for the last five years, every time I've had a legal question. And throughout the months when I bumped into him, so we wouldn't be charged for it, I'd ask the same question. So I was surprised as anyone was when what happened, happened. It was my understanding that there would be a more thorough investigation. So I'll take responsibility for that. But the bottom line here is that you really, what I do in evaluating an individual's performance is look at the sum total of their performance. Not only do I look at how they perform their job, I look at their professionalism, I look at my relationship between them, and I look at their responsiveness. And I also know a lot of lawyers, and like baseball players, very few of them bat a thousand. So that being said, that's where I'm coming from. I acknowledge, perhaps, as has been admitted, some missteps, and I can assure you, and hopefully this doesn't occur in the future, if anyone here files a complaint with the Attorney General's office, we'll probably hear more from the attorney, our own attorney, than we care to do so. So that's kind of what I'm looking for. And take to heart this list that I just went through, because in my five years on council, I have witnessed performance around, I would say, just about every one of these issues. Was it flawless execution? No, but it was more than satisfactory from my perspective. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Legere. Anything else on this item? We have, just so I'm clear, we have a motion, because it's on the table. We have a second, and no more discussion, we will call for the vote. So there's a motion to ask the town manager to, in essence, remove, terminate, or send a letter to terminate Gus Rosenfeld. So that's the motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Three-four?
I do, yeah, do roll call, just to be sure. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickie?
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
Councilmember Legere?
Nay.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Schlem?
Nay.
Four-three.
Thank you very much. Thanks, council. Next item is Item 10, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action relating to review of all aspects of town legal services and possible alternatives. And Rick, are you going to take it from up here?
I think I will, if I can ask some assistance and put in that, I think that's right there.
All right, council, does anyone else from council need a quick break? I know we're almost the end of the agenda, but there's certainly at least one that needs to hit the, need your break. You okay? Okay, we'll continue. Sorry, Rick, Town Manager Davis, take it away.
Well, thank you. Mayor and council, as requested, our staff performed a, an analysis of legal services to provide the basis for any kind of decision to pursue the procurement of legal services for the town. The objective specifically is provide an objective analysis of recent legal services and provide viable options. We began by looking at some of the costs associated with legal expenses since 2004, 2005, and you can see the upper line, or blue line, represents the billings from, I'm sorry, the red line represents the billings from our town attorney, and the blue line above it represents the cumulative of the town attorney billings plus any use of outside legal. What we mean by outside legal letters are those attorneys not affiliated directly or in the employ of Gus Rosenfeld, other offices, other firms. And you can see that during the 2000, from 2006 to 2008, there was an increase of about $50,000, and then that, through some modified practices internally, some other changes that we made, those costs have come down. The other line that has come down, of course, is the use of outside legal counsel. As you look at how legal costs are distributed, in 2008, 2009, total of $242,000 was billed to the town, 144 of that, the greatest portion, relates to general representation, which is attendance at meetings, phone calls, counseling with town staff and elected officials. The next largest has to do with contract reviews and that kind of thing. There are planning and zoning, preparation of IGA's election as well in there. If you look and contrast that to 2009, 2010, you see the cost went down to $202,000. And the item that changed most significantly was the general representation, again emphasizing the change in how staff and council has been utilizing that general representation. Nevertheless, there were quite a few more individual issues that were addressed during that fiscal year. To place this in the context of how much we really are spending, it's important to compare that with other communities. We actually selected six other communities that we thought were close in size to Fountain Hills, compared their per capita town attorney expenses to ours. You can see that the town of Fountain Hills currently expensed for, again, excluding outside legal counsel, which to date we have none in this fiscal year, town of Fountain Hills expends $10 per citizen per year for attorney expenses. The town of Queen Creek is second, a little over $10, and the costs get as high as over $25 per capita, such in the city of Payson. What you'll notice about those charts or those towns that appear to have more costly services is that they are all in-house legal departments. Those cities that we compared to that contract like we do are Queen Creek and Maricopa. So as we talked about and debated what alternatives there are with regard to the procurement of legal services, it really boiled down to two alternatives, and anything else that we developed or came up with was simply a variation of these two. First one is create an internal legal function, and the second is to continue contracting with an outside firm. As we look at the hypothetical budget, which we anticipate would be associated with an in-house legal division, you can see salaries associated with three full-time equivalents, benefits, outside legal costs, which we would still need to budget for, but not necessarily spend from year to year, that's dictated by the types of issues that we confront, supplies, including book subscriptions and memberships, internal supports and charges, and of course, meetings, which are required for the attorney to attend. The total, excluding one-time costs associated with equipment, space modifications, et cetera, would be approximately $340,000. There are certain pros, which we should point out and note relative to the establishment of an in-house legal division. First of all, we would be able to enjoy singular attention to town issues, onsite staff and council availability would be enhanced, and then the costs associated with those services would not be as sensitive to issues that, and volatility in the community and outside. In other words, no matter what occurred during the year, those costs would remain relatively static, whereas right now, the more time we consume, the more costly our legal services are, and that's driven mostly by the types of issues that we confront during the year, which is also very unpredictable. The cons, obviously some loss of legal institutional knowledge or history that we've been able to build up over time, that would have to be replaced over time. And as we pointed out, the higher costs associated with the increased rate associated with specialized legal services. Currently, our town attorney works in a firm, and we're able to tap expertise within that firm that a town attorney wouldn't necessarily possess. And then there's the higher annual budget to support an in-house legal division. The other alternative is to continue contracting with an outside firm. The pros associated with that is that we can expect to maintain legal costs near the current level of expenditures, we would still enjoy the access of firm specialists and support staff, and the ability to change the firm or primary attorney would remain with us. Whereas if you hire somebody, you would have to actually discharge that person in order to replace them or change the attorney. The cons are the costs will always be subject to the volatility or complexity of issues. And again, as I mentioned before, it's very difficult to control the annual budget for legal services when you have an in-house staff. What you saw with regard to how we've been able to decrease our costs since 2008, that kind of thing would be very difficult to do if you had an in-house legal division. Right now, we can adjust how we utilize Andrew's services and therefore adjust our annual expenditures. And with that, I'll leave, I'll give it back to you, Mayor, for further discussion and questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Rick, for that, and I know we talked a lot about costs, we can go over, you know, as much as we wish, again, in our work-study, and I think that was our primary focus, at least that's what we spent most of our time on at the work-study, we talked a lot about costs. But if folks want to talk, bring up any of those items, or if this item in fact is open to review all aspects of town legal services, which mentioned in the work-study could cover items related to costs, procurement, and service or service levels that we have, or, you know, any other aspect. But before we do that, I will, before I forget, ask, see if there's someone from the public on this item.
Yes, Mayor, Linda Bordeaux?
Thank you.
Hello again.
Hey.
Mayor, Town Council, you were just mentioning costs, which I thought was interesting. I found it interesting that both the town manager, as well as the town attorney, independently make more money than everybody on the council put together. So some of the facts and figures that you had up there made a good point to go to a single attorney firm as opposed to just one large firm. I know, I think the motion has already been passed, I don't know if I can talk to Attorney McGuire's firm at this point, but I'm sure his firm isn't the only firm that would provide such a broad base of attorney's pools to pull from, and all the various different aspects that Councilmember Legere was so kind to read about before. So I wanted to mention that. And by the way, Councilmember Legere, in his statement, did mention someone from the last meeting that came up and asked him what did the town attorney do. That's not exactly what happened, that person was myself. And Councilmember Legere was taking time to explain away some of my theories that I had mentioned at the council of what could have possibly happened, that the Attorney General was, you know, investigating. And one of the things that I was talking about was, I thought it was his fiduciary responsibility to tell the town council that there was an investigation. And Councilmember Legere was rattling off some of the things, and saying that that really wasn't what he was supposed to do, since everyone knew. And I sarcastically asked him, "Well, what does he do?" I wasn't actually asking to meet with the town attorney to find that out. In fact, you can find out most of what Councilmember Legere just read online. So I kind of am surprised that you would have said and kind of spun that that way. So having said that, back to the agenda item at hand here, I'm kind of torn on it. I see the value of having just one town attorney, because then his time won't be divided, as Andrew McGuire's has been with all his other duties. But I do see value in having a broad base to choose from in terms of the different kind of aspects that we have. I know that the firm, his hourly rate right now is negotiated at $300 an hour. I know in that graph there, it seemed as though the town manager had lowballed what they would charge an attorney, and highballed what they would go to outside interests for. In terms of Attorney McGuire's firm, it's not just the fact that this open meeting law thing happened, it's bad advice with the town manager and Mr. Davis. On the RFP system, I know the town's being sued right now by two garbage authorities, so there's that. There's a whole host of other items that have had some, you know, perhaps not the best advice given by the town attorney. And I appreciate the fact that in hindsight, it's 20-20, but I don't know, he might be a little long in the tooth to have that kind of hindsight be 20-20. You would think that would be a standard procedure to cover every kind of action item from an Attorney General in writing immediately. So thank you for your time, council members, and I appreciate your service.
Thanks, Ms. Bordeaux. I'm sure we will probably have, we'll cover most everything you brought up, I suspect, here, as we have a real wide agenda item here. First, let me just, while things are fresh, does Town Attorney McGuire want to share any information related to what was just spoke of here at Call of the Public?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I think it's, the only factual thing I think is worth clarifying in this case at all is that the rates charged by any attorney working for the town are capped at 210, regardless of what that attorney's regular rate is. For instance, in the most recent referendum challenge, when the town was sued by the waste provider to challenge the petitions that the town had certified and sent along and was moving forward with the referendum election, defending that requires an elections expert because it happens in the course of about seven or eight days. David Pennarts from our firm is an elections expert whose normal billing rate is $365 an hour. His work was done for the town at the same capped at 210 rate, as is all partner-level work, associates are billed at a lower rate than that.
All right, if you would, on that topic, because we did talk a lot about that, and related to specifically how we're being served today with the council, that's not in-house council, with your firm, you're with a large firm, can you talk about how you, or how we are served from a legal aspect related to a variety of different issues that might come forward? You're not the only attorney, as you just mentioned, that serves us, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, I handle all the primary duties as town attorney, but obviously along the way, things will occur that are outside my area of expertise, and frankly, I don't want them to be my area of expertise. Simple things like the town's protected trademark, it's not necessarily a protected trademark as that term is used, as I discovered when I talked to our franchise and trade and copyright folks, and explained exactly how town's mark is protected. The town has several different marks. The town was offered a piece of property from a developer as a donation. That piece of property had to have an environmental study done to make sure there wasn't anything wrong with it before the town took it over. That environmental study that was produced to the town, without the expertise of our firm's environmental lawyers, would not- We mentioned the elections issue, Mr. Pennarts being able to be available to do that at a moment's notice is certainly a benefit to the town. Whenever we're talking about public finance issues, your bond counsel is two doors down from me. So that Julie has the benefit of picking up the phone, talking to her bond counsel, or if I have a question for him based upon something Julie's asked me, you don't even get billed for those things. Those are just conversations in the office that we're making sure that we're all on the same page.
If you would, on the, it's maybe not that question for you, on the in-house versus the way we're served today and have been for, probably since we were a town? I don't know if we've always been served in this manner, at least for quite a while. But the, if you have an in-house attorney, that doesn't mean you don't end up hiring other attorneys to help you in specialized areas, just like you utilize today. People within your firm, fortunately, over the last couple of years, at the reduced rate, rather than the past, we've had to have even folks outside of your firm, the firm you've been, you've been an attorney at hired at a higher rate, I suspect.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the graph that Mr. Davis's presentation had was very telling on that fact. Prior to joining the firm I'm with now, six years ago, there was a need, because I was essentially with a small firm and about like, you know, Ms. Bordeaux referred to, a small shop. I was in a two-lawyer firm, essentially. In doing work that way, in order to avoid getting outside of your areas of expertise, you have to recommend that the town use different expertise. What you've seen on that graph is that the matters that were started prior to my joining Gus Rosenfeld, as they concluded, the need for that outside expertise was no longer there, and so the two lines intersected. That economy of scale is what's been available to the town since we've represented you from Gus Rosenfeld. The town has been contract town attorney since the very beginning. Mr. Farrell was the first attorney. I worked for Mr. Farrell, straight out of law school, for three years. So I represented the town in that capacity in the mid-'90s. And it has been a town attorney, town prosecutor, both on contracts from the beginning.
All right. That gets us, I mean, I'm not sure how much we want to cover exact, because I think we had a very...
Well, and Mr. Mayor, I did leave out one key thing, actually, this morning. Some of the things that you don't see ever on your bill, unless it becomes a lot of hours for which it becomes unfair to other municipalities that they carry the burden. But you won't see anything on any of your bills this year, for any of the time I've spent at the behest of Avondale and other communities, to work with, and at the behest of the league, to work with the league's working group and the Home Builders Association as they move a very substantial piece of legislation through, with respect to development fees. The meeting this morning at the governor's office had, you won't be charged for that. Someone else is picking up the tab. As with just about every legislative issue, you get the benefit of other communities that have legislative liaisons that are down at the Capitol all the time. You get the benefit of us being informed of that, so that if there's something on the radar screen that your town manager needs to know about, or the council needs to know about, that we're able to provide you current information. And, you know, I think you're lucky that you have a council member who's very diligent about sending out to the whole council all the bills that are out there that are going to impact the cities and towns. This year, it'd be impossible to put them all out there, because there are just so many of them. But I think that's an important thing to keep in mind, is that that experience is something that also comes along with the ticket.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you. I wanted to look at the PowerPoint of where it says outsourcing, and it says cons. There's two bullet points, but they're really both the same. One says costs will always be subject to the volatility, complexity of issues. The other says very difficult to control the annual budget, which is really the same thing. But what I would offer is that that would not change if we had an in-house, because again, an in-house would have to go to other areas of expertise. So that same volatility and complexity of issues is the same either way. So I don't, I don't really see that as a con of outsourcing any more than it would be if we had someone in-house. But a bunch of stuff happened a certain year, you still have to get outside resources. So I just wanted to point that out, because, as you all know, with some of the discussion we're going to be having very soon about the budget, that I just think that we really need to be, if we want to just take all the personalities and all everything out of this, and look at it from a budget point of view and from a cost point of view, we're kind of getting forced to look at that more carefully now. The other thing about down the legislature, a lot of times, after all these years of hearing, bills get introduced, and the discussion is always, why are we, what problem are we trying to solve? So that would be the other thing I'd kind of offer while we're talking about this, too.
And like I said, we talked so much about costs before. I think everybody had questions looking at this, and I think they had their questions answered. And I don't want to presume, but I think it seemed like where we were in the work studies, we all kind of conceded that it's less expensive to do what we're doing than it would be to have an in-house attorney. But beyond that, there's still, there are other items beyond costs that I hope we can talk about tonight, and then perhaps talk about a process of how we move forward with legal services, and like we do with every other service that we get here in town, or how our, you know, we're talking specifically to our town manager, because like our town manager and our town, we're talking about our town attorney, but like our town manager and our, and the judge, the council makes, you know, that decision as to who's staffed and for how long, and how much they're paid, and all those types of things. So that's why this item is before us, to talk about more extensively. But most of the discussions, I think, around communication and others, there's a lot of discussion that could happen more directly between the town attorney and council members as to how they want to be served and that sort of thing, what they're sensitive to. And I think to some extent, over the last couple of years, we've also been, we've been real, not reluctant, but we've, we've really tempered our conversation with our town attorney because of, we don't want to have costs go up, which has been, yeah, which has been effective. Because when you look at the cost over the last couple of years, it's gone down considerably, probably in part because we haven't been involved in lawsuits, and in part, probably based on some of the changes that Rick, our town manager instituted to try to mitigate legal expenses. But beyond the cost item, and there are certainly benefits that we've talked about as well at the work study, that having an in-house attorney would bring. Are there, is there a process that we might want to go forward with to measure or, and professionally and respectfully evaluate how we're being served by our, through our contract council in the future? If these are items that you'd be more comfortable talking to one-on-one, that's fine. But if there's things that we want to talk about tonight, related to having a process, and as our town manager talked about so often, is measuring, measuring things. How are we doing? You know, I'm fairly confident our town attorney's doing a good job, but we, you know, that's, I look at the hard numbers, numbers, costs are going down, that's a good thing. There are other things that I, gives me that reason to consider that opinion. But are there other areas we need to measure? Communication, obviously, we brought up tonight, as the prior agenda item was focused on primarily. How do we, how do we affect that as a council to make sure it is better? And then service levels, are there different things we want our town attorney to do? We mentioned some of the things that he does that we don't get charged for, and there's things that he does that we do get charged for. So as a council, how do we get our arms around a process that's respectful and professional as far as related to our town attorney? We, you know, we've been just kind of cruising along for, I don't know how long now, six, seven years, under kind of the same, nine years, under the same type of process. And it's generally, as Councilmember Leger covered, all the different aspects of what our town attorney does, it's worked fairly well. There are some things that come up here and there, and I just want to make sure we have a way that it's good for all of us to address and go move forward on and potentially have a discussion on process. I'm not sure who had their hands up first, but Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been really helpful going through the last six months of billing to get an idea of what kinds of things we're paying for. And I think it's a, it's a good exercise to help address what, exactly what you're talking about. It really points out that trying to compare the in-house with contract is we're really comparing apples and oranges. Because if you look at, for these six months, and I did not do this, but add up the hours, you'd almost have to look at how many hours were spent doing legal work for the town for the dollar amount, as compared to someone that we would have in-house eight or 10 hours a day. Because for the money spent on an in-house, you'd be getting a lot more hours, which would have the potential to do a lot more things. Some of the things that Andrew was mentioning that are covered now, just because somebody else is paying for them. Well, we might be paying for them, but we're still getting a bigger bang for the buck, I think. You know, and we look at things like, it's in here about travel to Fountain Hills and travel from Fountain Hills. So I mean, that was kind of like, okay, we're paying for travel. That's, you know, kind of gave me room to pause. And then when you see the, like, dollar amounts for, like, when Andrew's out here for, like, a meeting day, he starts early and sometimes goes late. So we had one day in here, it was 17 hours, and it was $3,633 for one day. So it kind of puts it into perspective that, you know, for a day's work, contracting, you know, that dollar amount is bigger than it would be for the person that comes and sits in the office every day. So I mean, I think this is helpful to just get an idea, and like, when we looked up at the diagram that showed the cities and towns that had in-house, it's really hard to compare. Yes, they're paying more for it, but we would really need to know what all of that attorney is doing. You know, what do they do on a daily basis? As compared to, when we look at the contract, you know, there are some days that there are no billables. And like, in the summer, like, when we're, you know, not doing anything, they're, they get a lot less. So I, I think we need to look at this in more ways than just as it was presented, to keep in perspective, you know, the differences in the dollar amounts.
And I think you're absolutely right. It's, it's very challenging to consider town versus town, because there's different things going on. One, as we talked about in the work study, one might have more commercial items that might cause more hours, because it's, you're doing more development agreements, or who knows what. But it's also, I think, I don't, I don't hear you saying it'd be less expensive to have in-house attorney, and that's not the only point, of course. But as you said, what's a benefit of contract service in relation to cost is that you pay for what you use. You pay for what you use, you're not paying someone to be there when you're not, when you don't need them, like in the summer. But there are things, there are, as an employee of the town, there are things that perhaps that employee, as the attorney would do, that Andrew, our town attorney, they wouldn't do. So there's things, because they're there, they would pick up some other things. So, but it is so hard to compare town to town, or city to town, or however it goes.
But it'd be helpful to talk to one of the towns, or one or two of them, and say, "Okay, so what all does your attorney do, you know, day in and day out?" Just to get a handle of comparing, you know, we talk about level of service. Are we getting more services with the in-house person?
I think that's great. I think that's one of those things we want to capture. I think that's part of a process to evaluate how we want to be served as a, as a, by a legal entity. Are there towns that are being served differently that we, that we think that are things that we might want to consider? But are they, I can't, I didn't hear you specify particularly one element of being served that would be different by an in-house or a contract attorney as we are today. But so how do we take what you had mentioned and put it into a process to consider legal services? How would we take what you've shared and put it into a process so that we can evaluate how we're being served?
Well, I guess I'd like to just explore a little bit more, and, you know, figuring out, okay, so if we just look at the last six months, which have not been, I mean, right now, for half a year, we're just about at 101,000.5. And so how many hours does that represent? Just to get a handle on, on what that money equates to hour-wise.
Okay.
And then getting an idea of some of the other communities that have in-house attorneys, and what more are they bringing to that community because they're there every day?
Okay, I'm not sure that gets us anywhere, but maybe it does. But I guess we're still talking costs, we need to still talk costs. I want to, I want to, I think it'd be helpful to understand how do we want to be served? And what do we want our town attorney to do? And how do we want him to communicate? And those are the types of things I think could be, I'd like to hear tonight on this agenda item, is, are those things? But maybe there's worthwhile staff resources to spend on covering what you're speaking of then. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thank you. That kind of goes to what I meant, what, why do we do this? Why do we change? What problem are we trying to solve? What do we feel is missing? If we, if we feel anything is missing. What I liked about your idea about, you know, not necessarily evaluation, but maybe even a presentation, if there is some question about what the duties are of a town attorney, when you came up and spoke, and there's a lot of vagaries, and there was during the, even during the election, about all of these things. And there's a lot of talk about all these things that are not right, but then, when we hone down on them, we've been remarkably well-served. You look through the last 10 years, nine to 10 years' worth of, of, well, let's just say, like, the actions or the lawsuits and things like that. If you look at every single one of them, and then you follow it to how it was resolved, you would be amazed. And so it's easy to speak in these big, broad terms and say, "Oh, the town's always," or "there's this or that going on." But the reality of it isn't there. It's not true. And as, and you all know right now, that if we were to get any kind of a report that would help us evaluate, not just from costs, but that would be a good thing to hear about. Because it was a difficult thing to define and to articulate, was like, well, no, and it was not, this did not happen, that did not happen. So if we did have some sort of a regular reporting, almost kind of like we do with the prosecutor, or like when the judge would come and tell us, because it is easy to not really know what, what goes on day-to-day with these things, that might help us a little bit also. Not to say the cost isn't important, but if, if we look, we say, "We're being served, there's no big hole," then the bottom line really is lower. So if we're getting what we need for that bottom line, I, and I'm interested to see how it would translate to in ours, but maybe ultimately it doesn't matter as much if we're getting served the way we want for less than we would have, so.
Councilmember Hanson.
And maybe we need to extend the discussion to members of the staff as well, because, I mean, each one of them have probably legal needs, you know, in their daily tasks, and they might have some input as well, as far as what would help them.
Absolutely. Councilmember Oki.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you, Mayor, and fellow councilmembers have hit on it, some good points. If we were to just extrapolate, if we were to be using Mr. McGuire at a rate of $210 an hour, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, understandably vacation, that wouldn't, it would be about $436,800. So, you know, we do need to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges as to what we're getting. I think it's important, if, Mr. Davis made some changes as far as the way in which the staff communicate with Mr. McGuire, seeing that there are increasing legal fees, and that has been very successful, and Mr. Davis should be commended for taking, taking charge of that and getting our fees down. But what I've sensed, Mr. Mayor, in the time that I've been, it's almost a year now, is that there's more that the staff would like to be doing. There's more, I believe, that us as council would like to do. Mr. Councilman Leger pointed out, you know, I, when I bump into Mr. McGuire, that's when I ask him the questions, you know, keep down the costs. I know it's a bit tongue-in-cheek, but it's actually true, too, because any time... Mr. Councilman Legay pointed out, you know, when I bump into Mr. McGuire, that's when I ask him the questions, you know, keep down the costs. I know it's a bit tongue-in-cheek, but it's actually true, too. Because anytime Mr. McGuire's responding to an email to council or to staff, those are billable hours, rightfully so. Certainly don't begrudge Mr. McGuire and his firm for making a living, and that's what the contract is. But as a result of this pullback from communicating with legal and this pullback from things that we would like to accomplish as a town and staff, and through my communication with department heads and other staff members, there's more that would like to be done that we could grow, but we're not. We're holding back because we want to keep the legal costs down. So, I think we shouldn't be looking at it in the sense of only Mr. McGuire and what the costs are, and we're keeping those costs down, let's keep it static. But how is that affecting the staff and the different departments as well? Are they not doing as much as they could be because they're putting some things that are not as important on the back burner, but should still ultimately get completed? You know, anytime we have to do an RFP, I know we all cringe up here because of the costs associated with that. And any contract reviews, any of those sorts of things, we should be taking those into account. And we cannot ignore the value of having an attorney down the hall that Mr. Davis or other staff members can just pop in and say, hey, let me bounce this idea off you. I know they certainly can call Mr. McGuire or shoot him an email and do those sorts of things, but I think because of the concern about the cost, they hold back as a result of that, and they don't do as much perhaps as they would like to do. And, you know, turnaround, we aren't Gus Rosenfeld's only client. And having somebody in-house is designated strictly to Fountain Hills, can serve a number of purposes. In-house training for staff, risk management issues. And I've spoken with Mr. Davis about that. That could be a potential benefit. Training for us as councilmembers on open meeting law issues, you know, things of those sort, just general education. I would love to be able to, as I do routinely in speaking with Mr. Davis, walk down the hall and talk to the town attorney, hey, how is this going? How is that going? Those are the sorts of intangibles that an in-house attorney would bring to the table. So, it's not so much just a bottom line. And I think it's difficult to measure, and I think we put the staff in a difficult position to say, if we had an in-house counsel, what more could you do? Well, it almost puts them in a situation where they're saying, we want in-house counsel and at odds with Mr. McGuire, and makes it uncomfortable. So, as a result, they think we kind of get a little static, and things don't move forward, and we don't necessarily get all the information that we would like to get. And it's understandable. You certainly don't want to be a department head saying, we need in-house counsel because, just an example, we're not getting the contracts back as quickly as we would like. You know, those aren't things that are going to come up. I can't imagine department heads would do that because they've got to communicate with Mr. McGuire the following week and following month, those sorts of things. So, I would put to, that our town manager needs to find a way to communicate with our department heads, communicate with the staff, and hopefully our staff will be able to provide honest, truthful information, perhaps in an anonymous manner in some way or another, so that Mr. Davis can bring that information to us and say, if we did have an in-house, or what are the legal things that you're not doing that we would like to do that you're holding back because it's going to cost? And I think we need to get that information, because otherwise, you know, frankly, I think if we're going to come back and, you know, there's not going to be anything else, we're going to continue doing the baseline that we're doing because of the cost, and we're not going to be able to exceed and excel as a town. And that's why I think generally, in-house, even if it does cost a bit more, would be very beneficial for our town. And, you know, in times of litigation, presuming we hire a qualified town attorney, which I have to imagine we would, we're going to realize some cost savings as well because we're not on the clock whenever that attorney's working on something. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. If I could, Ms. for anyone on council, is it worth our time? Or, I mean, obviously, staff's already done due diligence on this, I think twice over the last two years. And we're looking at it tonight about expenses and comparing as best they can apples to oranges, because it is apples to oranges. And each town's a different fruit in that respect as well. So, they've done, obviously, their best, but they could spend some more time on this. But in light of our, and it's purely speaking on cost here, in light of our budget constraints, and we know we're going to have more over the next couple of months, is it, do we want our staff, in particular, to spend more time on this? Do we think we can afford what we know will cost a little, you know, a little more or a lot more on legal services to bring them in-house? Do we want to consider that further at this time? Councilmember Oki.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps it would be, I think there's more questions to be asked and perhaps more contemplation by council, and perhaps you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps a motion to table this for some future council meeting. I'm not sure procedurally if we have to select a specific date, but just move to table this for some future council date so that we can perhaps think about this further.
Yeah, I don't think we have, there's no motion, but we could always continue to another discussion. I think we're here, and we have our opportunity since it's been agendized to talk about, I mean, I think our goal is to figure out a process to measure in a professional and respectful way how we want to be served legally. We've been served in a similar fashion for, since we've been a town. Do we want to change that? Do we want to have it in-house? Do we want to? I don't think the in-house and outside council is as much of a discussion for tonight, because I think what I'd like to hear more is, what's the problem? How do we want to be served differently? How can we be more effective? And I agree, some of the takeaways would be, in fact, for our town manager in particular to work with staff, as he has in the past, to talk about how would you like to be served, where are some areas we'd like to that wouldn't cost us a great deal. And I think, as you commended him, you know, most of it, we've been pushing back on staff which are, which cost less than having our attorney do the same or similar work. He's asked his staff to work harder and do more and, you know, and with less resources, as everybody has here, and not push things over to the attorney, or perhaps expect things quite as quickly in order to reduce cost. But I don't know if this is the time to go, okay, what, town staff, what do you want our town attorney to do? Because it's going to equate into dollar amounts, whether it's in-house or outside council. You really do end up paying for what you use. And that's one benefit of, clearly, of having an outside attorney. As Councilmember Hanson mentioned, she's looking right at what, we're only paying for what we're asking for. And certainly, it's not inexpensive, but compared to other communities, it appears to be, we're getting a decent value for the dollar. So, if you guys can help as far as a process, I don't know, we can always have further discussions even outside of a council meeting with what we want our staff to consider bringing forward to ultimately get us a process that we want to stick with. And as I meant to mention, is I'm sure we don't need to recreate the whole wheel here. There's, as you mentioned, just here, you know, within 20 miles of us, there's a lot of other towns that do, that procure services from legal in the same way that we do, through a contract method. How do they, maybe we can figure out, how do they evaluate and process this, or what reports do they get that would help council determine, you know, here's what I'd like to see different, or here's what I'd like to change? Those types of things. So, I don't know if we have to recreate the whole wheel, but I think it's a good opportunity for input tonight. And I can't remember who was up first here.
Jenny.
Councilmember Dickey.
Who am I? Jenny.
Well, Mayor, I think I understand what you're saying here. I agree with you. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're trying to get to a place where we're all feeling we have a lot of communication, that we're able to evaluate and feel more comfortable with the way we evaluate, even if we can't move forward with a big study right now of how much more time does everybody need, and maybe we need to get through the budget before that. But in light of the conversation we were just having, I see that, I believe that you're trying and striving to reconcile some of this. And how can we make it so that the council is comfortable going forward?
Well, through the process, just thus far, a couple of things have come up that we need to consider addressing. Communications have been asked to be, you know, make sure we don't do what happened last time on that. Let's make sure that doesn't happen, and that's a priority probably from all of us on council. But I mean, I don't know what other councilmembers want to see. So, whatever they want to see, I want to have the input in. I think over here, Councilmember Hanson.
Maybe we could kind of do like they did with the strategic planning process and have a parking lot?
Yeah.
And everybody could put their ideas and maybe their thoughts of what could be done better, or, I mean, certainly, and that would make it easier for the staff to participate as well. And I think one thing, just to throw out, that, you know, it's kind of a tweener thing between an in-house and a contract, is we had a good arrangement when Mr. Farrell was here. He actually housed his office out of an office in Town Hall. And, but it was still a contract arrangement. So, it ended up kind of being the best of both worlds, because basically, he was almost here every day and available, but he still discharged a set rate per month. And it, I mean, it really kept the cost in check. And that's kind of something that we didn't really, you know, throw into the mix.
Okay. So, at that time, that attorney charges just a flat rate per month? So, that's something I hadn't heard. I mean, that's, I don't know if that's something that's available for a contract attorney anymore.
Well, and that was a while ago. That was a while ago as well.
There's also, obviously, if you still have a contract attorney and they're just, they're more accessible, you're likely going to end up getting a little more cost. I mean, if it's not a flat fee, but, yeah, I mean, if that's available, we should know if that's available. I don't know. Councilmember Legay, and then Vice Mayor.
Mayor, you've asked a suggestion with respect to process, and I think that first, as a council, we need to decide whether we want to go in-house or out-of-house. And I think that's the starting point. And we need to make a decision as a council, whether we want to go in-house or out-of-house based on all the variables, the presentations we've looked at, so forth and so on. And then, I think we can then look at ways of improving moving forward. For example, if we decided to stay in-house, Councilwoman Dickey mentioned, or implied reconciliation, some of the things I wrote down that I'd like to see if we stay in-house, excuse me, if we stay with our current situation, would be to, you know, review and refresh our attorney agreement. It's something we haven't done in a while. Annual or semi-annual performance reviews and reports. That's something that's been recommended this evening as well. Look for cost savings. Get input from staff, so forth and so on, as has been recommended. Look at efficiencies in how we do what we do. Whether you're in-house or out-of-house, I think you need to do the same analysis. And scope, scope of work. And breadth of knowledge. What brings to the table the greatest breadth of knowledge, a in-house person or a large law firm? So, in summary, I think that the operative question is to stick with, you know, contracting out-of-house or stay in-house. And once we make that decision, I think then we can go about, you know, improving the process. I think philosophically, we have differences here, and everyone has made a good point of view. And I see this discussion becoming circular at some point in time until we make a decision. And then, once we make a decision, we have to say, what is the best way we can approach that? What is the best way we can do that? And as I had mentioned, if we're not trying to fix anything, we certainly can look at ways of improving how we do what we do. And those are things I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
So, what I'm hearing is the attorney agreement or legal service agreement that we have, that could actually be our, it might be, if it's an in-house attorney, it'd be kind of like the job description or responsibilities. That could be actually our, as far as a process, that could be our way of communicating what, how council wants to be served. Those items could be in there. Related to making a decision about an in-house attorney or a contract attorney, that's kind of why we've been carrying it forward, is that's a budgetary impacting item. Sounds like there's, some councilmembers think there's still some questions as to what the cost might more closely be if it is an in-house. So, maybe, I'm not sure if we can come to that consensus tonight on whether we want to, or how much of a commitment we want to make to how long we would remain doing things the way we are doing it today. I think what we can take away from us tonight is starting to work on perhaps the processes to work, and I'll look to Rick Davis to help guide us and Andrew about the scope of services and getting some input there, or recommending a process after considering what other communities do and seeing if we feel that we want to replicate some of those items ourselves. Councilmember Oki.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that Mr. Davis prepare this, certainly to the extent that he needs information from Mr. McGuire, but that he prepare it independently as, you know, goes without saying that Mr. McGuire and his firm has a vested interest in what the council decides to do. And I don't mean that in any derogatory way, of course, but that it'd be important that Mr. Davis collect the information independently, that he do his due diligence and present the information to the council, as I think any information provided by Mr. McGuire could perhaps be, might sway one way or another. I guess that's what I'm saying.
That, many of us, if any, would question it, but it's probably not bad to get input on items that he might be more specifically aware of, and then our town attorney, our town manager can just simply state, this is information provided by our current attorney.
One other point, Vice Mayor. If, you know, my fellow councilman and mayor, if cost is not an issue and level of service is not an issue, I'm curious if, you know, certainly, those are issues to be considered. If we were to hire a town attorney, much like other towns do, they hire competent individuals that represent the interests of the town. They don't hire, I guess, associates out of law school two years. So, assuming for the sake of argument that the quality of service is comparable and the cost is not an issue, certainly, I will, I will agree that the cost would be more for in-house, and that's not just for the attorney, that's for paralegal, legal services and other things. If cost were not the issue, would there be more interest in bringing that in-house for all the positives or for the things that we've been discussing here? So, do we hone in on, can we eliminate the issue with respect to cost or the benefits that outweigh perhaps that additional costs, you know, some of the points that I made earlier? Because if that answer is yes, then, you know, there is some intrinsic value to that, and we should look towards, if not this year, or the next year, you know, certainly move towards that direction and getting away from contract counsel for the town of Fountain Hills.
All right. Any comments on that? I don't want to hog the microphone. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think that we've talked about a lot of things tonight concerning Mr. McGuire. I think that we have to sit back and take a look at the communications we've talked about. The other thing I would like to see is more trust and integrity. And I feel like that it's going to be hard for me to accept that right now till we can get some things worked out with the communications. Thank you.
Anything else to talk about related to this item tonight? And then I will certainly talk to the town manager and listen to input from council and others and see where we go from here related to a process. I just didn't want to have this hanging out there forever and take up a lot of folks' time and not get anywhere. I would like to make sure we're effective with our time. Anything more on this item tonight? So, regarding, let's make sure we don't leave Rick and the team in a lurch here. Rick, is it fair to ask you a little bit about what you've heard tonight and where you think we might want to go? Or would you like me to take a first stab at that and then get council input to make sure we're sending staff potentially on the right course?
Mayor, council, I certainly think it's appropriate, given our current circumstances, to look, as we have before, at how we're utilizing legal services. Andrew was certainly integral in our development of proposals last year and the year before to help eliminate some costs, consulting with him to see how that can be done, certainly understanding the breadth of, scope of services that we currently enjoy, and then comparing that to what is contracted for in other communities. Understanding specifically what other communities do in order to bring accountability, or I should say scrutiny, to how they utilize legal services is a valid question to ask them and understand best practices, and then make a recommendation to you as supervisors of legal services, what changes you can institute in order to legal services, what changes you can institute in order to gain a better, perhaps, understanding and more information, better communication relative to legal services. Many of the tracks that you follow with regard to your interactions with me, I think, would be helpful with Andrew. And I can say that he hasn't been the beneficiary of the kind of communication, regular communication that I have with you, because I am in-house. I'm down, I am down the hall. And that certainly does enhance and improve the ability of you to reach out and just communicate with me. There's no doubt about that. It requires a little bit, a little extra effort. Andrew is here every other Thursday, and maybe one idea is that we just set up time for you all to come in and visit with him. I'm willing to facilitate anything.
Is that free of charge?
What was that?
Is that free of charge?
He's here on Thursdays. I won't charge you. But I think, I think opening up that communication, giving you more opportunities to dialogue with Andrew certainly would be helpful, and we'll look at ways that that can be accomplished.
And I think I've heard some council, several council members mention, if there's a little more information related to in-house, not necessarily, maybe cost, to help us understand, I'm not sure, Councilmember Elke, if you can help me here on some of the in-house part still.
Well, I think, Mayor, if you're referring to what I had mentioned earlier, just some of the benefits of having someone in-house, some of the other things, you know, communication with the department heads, additional projects. I think at the work-study session, we had talked about revising the council procedures. That was one thing that we talked about. The town code, there's certain issues that we'd like to, or not issues, but like to look at the town code overall, perhaps do some revisions there. You know, some of the things that, having somebody in-house where we're not so concerned about the cost, and, you know, Mr. Davis has been here, was it three years now? Three years now. And based on the experience and everything, I'm curious as to if cost weren't the issue. I mean, are there, in your opinion, based on the other towns that you've worked at, you know, would you prefer someone in-house as opposed to out-of-house if cost weren't an issue?
I've been clear to Andrew, I've been clear to everybody here that if I could, if I could have almost anything in-house that I could reach out and touch, that's always great. Cost does bear into this, efficiencies bear into this. There's a lot of things I would like, but certainly, that would be wonderful, that would be, that'd be great if, but, you know, and I say that with caveat of, the other advice that I've given you also relative to that. It's always, always great to be able to just reach out and touch somebody right next to your office, but sure.
Yeah. The other thing is, goes perhaps without, were you going to say something? I'm sorry, Councilmember Blige. You go for it, please. I got to look more to the left over here, more.
I have no comment.
Microphone.
I was just thinking that there's many ways of reaching out, you know. You can reach out down the hallway, or you can pick up the telephone. There's many, many ways of reaching out, there's many ways of communicating, there's many ways of staying in the loop. But as I stated earlier, I think, you know, we're going to have a circular discussion here until we come to the conclusion whether we want to be in-house or out-of-house. And I think that's the operative question. And it sounds like there's some research that can be done and more information to draw us a little closer to that decision.
Thank you. The other, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dickey, go for it.
Mayor, just going to say that's, I would, I would agree because I'm not physically here very often, and, but I still can call Andrew when I need something. And I think, and just to appreciate what you said, which kind of goes to what Councilman Elke was asking about the intrinsic value, but I think we have to look beyond that. Yes, it's nice to reach out and touch, but we're looking at the town and how the town is served and by having, and again, I'm not jumping to conclusions, but having one person with one set of expertise as opposed to having a firm at your disposal, there's, that's a different, that's a, that's a benefit in itself. So I think, to answer, I think what was Tate's question a little while ago about, is it worth looking and going forward even if we're not looking at the money? You know, there's never anything that's wrong with information. So I would say yes, but, you know, we always know that it does come down to costs, but the other values, we have to look at them on both sides. So I guess I don't want to argue with you, Rick, but I also want to say I think there's intrinsic value by having expertise, broad expertise.
Right. And Mayor and council, I hope I've been effective in communicating, there are pros and cons associated to each one of them. And the pros, definitely, having an in-house firm, I mentioned singular attention, you know, onsite staff availability, council availability, and then the cost not associated with volatility of issues that go up. You pay one rate. There are also cons associated with that, too. So it's very difficult to say without the consideration of several factors, and it's difficult for me to do is to just look, would you rather have something in-house and say, and not, and ignore the, both the pros and the cons associated with that?
Good, Rick. I think, so I think in summary, you did wrap it up pretty well. We added a couple more things in our taking this forward. And then the other things that I haven't mentioned in the past are, you know, I think Andrew's done a fine job serving us. I've been, he's been responsive, you know, he's there when I need to talk to him, and I try to limit that to keep costs down. But I don't think that reflects, that has hindered the community or kept me from making a good decision or not by tempering my desire to call and ask a question, you know, more often than I have. But that's always going to be a factor. It's more of a resource question, you know. If it's an in-house attorney, then your question's still taking up the same amount of time from that attorney than it would be an outsourced attorney. But one thing that, you know, when, ultimately, Andrew will not be our town attorney. I mean, he'll retire, and before that, maybe you make another change, who knows? When the services of Andrew and Gus Rosenfeld come to and out, there'll be another attorney at some point. I think Andrew's done a good job, and a very good job. And is he perfect? No, and I'm certainly not perfect, that's for sure. And the next attorney will not be perfect either. And so, you know, some of the, some of the folks on council wanted to move earlier to change that attorney scenario. Just keep in mind, he's got a great vast amount of information and experience because he's been here from virtually, you know, day one. So he's got a great amount of value that we don't pay for, or perhaps we save money because he has all this vast amount of knowledge. So he has that. And then the other item is, is that if we do switch attorneys down at some point, then that attorney will not be perfect either, you know. And Andrew, I don't know if you'd say you're perfect, I doubt it, but you're a good, you're a very good attorney, and I know you're respected by others, and I think you, the offering from Gus Rosenfeld is a fair value for the community for the hourly rate. And I know you work hard to save us dollars by using other assets within that, within your office, when it's not something you're required to work on. You ask folks that can handle it, that costs the town less, to handle, to work. So I know you allocate your resources, being sensitive to the fact we're in a considerable budget shortfall here, and we appreciate that. But there are a lot of, there's so many different elements in considering this, I just think it's not as easy to just say we want to change because it's going, then it'll be all better, or, you know, if that's what some folks think. There's no perfect attorney or perfect solution out there, and it's, it's hard to always come up with an apples-to-apples solution. But I think, Rick, you did summarize it well with where we need to go next after listening to us. And I don't know if Andrew has anything to add before we conclude here on this item.
Mayor, I wouldn't think of keeping you here any longer.
All right. Thank you. Council, any other comments on this item? And I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate to ask or just get an update in the next couple of meetings to let us know where you're at, and then propose a date to have a more substantive discussion on these items once again. Councilmember Hanson.
So would it be safe to say if, in looking through some materials, we have either some observations or suggestions or any kind of input just to forward it to Rick so he can start compiling some of these things, and maybe the same thing from some of the staff people, if they just said, you know, we would like this, or just something, just in a, kind of an informal manner, to just funnel it his way?
Thank you. Process-wise, Rick?
For the compilation of this report, Mayor and council, that would be, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is council discussion direction of the town manager. Obviously, you just talked about this item. Were there any, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, we had some people speak from the public that seemed like they might need some answers on some things, so hopefully we can reach out to them.
Good. May I, Mr. Zalig, Ms. Bordeaux? There may have been someone else I didn't capture in my writing here.
Mr. Daley, I believe.
Oh, thank you. Summary council request on reports of recent activity. Anything further, Rick?
I think in my report that I guarantee you today, 95% of my time this week's obviously been spent on the budget.
Okay.
And we'll have some more information coming to you very soon.
Thank you. All right, look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second? Second. All in favor to give a say, an aye? Aye, opposed? Thank you.